We have Brian Marvel. And Robert Perry. We have a new member, Tyler Rigs. And Joe Chambers. And tonight. We get someone else. Let's take the pledge.
I. I completely dispute the lie of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Because we have a new member, we have, we'll have a swearing ceremony, but I bet Scott does that.
I just.
All tired.
You can just stand there and put your hand up if you desire.
Tyler Rigs, you saw this right that you will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of this state. And that you will discharge the duties of your office when you could.
Yes, I do.
Great, thank you. We have a set of minutes to approve. The minutes of July 28. I read through them, did not see anything. That was out of luck.
I wonder on the minutes if we should put in the year of the minutes. We've got the date. But on the minutes, if you click on the exhibit.
It doesn't come up with the date?
It comes up with July 28, but we don't have a year.
Oh, that we definitely should put that on.
Yeah. Add those in a future.
I propose we accept the minutes from July 28, 2021, with the noted. Changes. Robert Perry has made.
Joe Chambers seconds, Brian Marvel's made the motion. Joe Chambers second. Any further discussion? Okay, and. I sent him an email, but he doesn't.
Yeah.
I guess I didn't see that.
I saw Michael. Michael is one I saw, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I'm talking about. Could have gotten lost while I was on the airplane. Okay. The next item on the agenda is public comments. It says citizens may express their views on issues within the planning commission's jurisdiction. The commission accepts comments in person by email. And by text, by law, email comments are considered public record. And will be shared with all parties involved, including the planning commission and the applicants. So if you're here to speak about another issue that. We have on the agenda already, we'll have you hold your comments until then. But if you have anything you'd like to speak on. That is. Under our purview, we'd be happy to hear from you. Okay. Got it, is there anything email or text? I don't have anything text, I just checked, but I'm gonna hurry up and check the email. I don't have anything right now, Kathleen. Okay. So not having any comments. Go ahead and close that portion of the meeting. We don't have any public hearings tonight. And so we'll move to item number one under legislative action. We are, have design standards for attached and multifamily residential developments. The planning, the Providence City Planning Commission will consider and may. Recommend to the Providence City Council the proposed amendments to the city code Title 10, Chapter 8. Section 9. Design standards for attached and multifamily residential development. This was brought before the city council on 7/21 of. 2021. And we probably ought to add that in there, we ought to put the years on these things. And send back to planning commission with recommendations. So Scott, would you like to bring us up to speed on this?
So the city council. Reviewed the proposed ordinance changes. And the recommendation that you'd given them. And then they felt like they had a few other things that. They wanted us to highlight just a little bit more. They, and so. In the packet where it says current draft. I added the things that. Were important to them. We had, historically, we've had. The facade elevation requirements only on the front facade. The council felt like they'd like to see that on all sides of the multifamily. Buildings. And then on. The garages and the driveways. They just wanted to make sure that things are set back far enough that people can actually park in the driveway. They didn't want to have something set so close that even though it has a garage to it. People are still parked. Over the top of the sidewalk because there's not enough room. If. Off the street. And then they also. On the phasing, their concern was what they didn't want to have happen was a developer come in. And start his, start their phases, his or her phases. And have the amenities be put off till the last or maybe not get to. So that's, those are the changes that. I incorporated into this particular draft. And. I. Just went through and tried to find, I tried to stick with Utah. Because it's usually easier if we can stick with somebody that's close. And I apologize, I don't remember. I don't remember which was that front city this came from. But the change is. Exterior building material, you can see on page five. And I apologize, I must turn my line numbering off, so I'm sorry for that. But on page five, top page five, under elevations. I completely scratched out. Our original code there, under front elevation and just changed it to exterior finishes. And then you can see that it talks about 50% of the entire building facade, not including windows and doors. Ours didn't say that. Ours didn't take the windows and doors out, so that's probably. That's a positive. And then of that 50%, that's brick, rock, stucco, stone, clapboard, wood block. Now, one of the things that. One of the council members said was they weren't interested in vinyl. However, I did look at quite a few communities that are allowing vinyl. If you want to take that out, that's fine, I just put it in there because it seems like that's kind of making a comeback a bit. On the siding. But at least 75% of the 50% shall be on the front building. Facade and then the facades. And I just realized I spelled that facade wrong, it says face and it's supposed to say facade, sorry.
Spell check doesn't get that.
No. All building facades that, and I, I don't know, I hope this is okay with the council because it doesn't necessarily say all four sides of the building. But it says. All building facades that face a public right of way or exterior street. Shall utilize at least 40% of the allowable materials and the use of aluminum siding is prohibited. So that's kind of something that. You could, we kind of need you to focus on tonight with your discussion. And then the driveway, which is just a few lines down, under garages. The driveway must be 17 feet in length, measured from the street road or alley to the garage door. And I came up with 17 feet in length because. I asked what the average size of a Ford four cab long bed pickup was, and that's what it said it was. And so I figured that would probably be the biggest that somebody would reasonably park in a driveway. So that's where 17 feet came from, if you were just looking to park. Cars or even. Large SUVs like Suburbans, you could probably reduce that a little bit, but for one of those very big trucks, you're gonna need 17 feet.
So in the past, we haven't spelled out the length?
No, because we've had setbacks that are 20 feet. And in the multifamily, we don't.
We don't have that.
Do that, we, we, we say 20 feet between buildings. And we, we talk about. On an alleyway, we set them back a bit, but we don't, we don't have the, the full blown setback like we do in everywhere else.
The minimum setback on the door, front facade.
I'm actually gonna have to look and see because it depends how they lay out their buildings, whether it's on.
They can get all the way down to what, 50?
Well, they're 10.
Yeah.
Yeah, because they have to be at least 20 feet between the buildings.
There'd be a concern on that, that. It would encroach a sidewalk, that's where it says it needs to back up to the road. Does that allow, in an instance, further to sidewalk that it could cross over there?
We probably should say the sidewalk, measured from the sidewalk. Or if, in the case of no sidewalks on the street.
I guess my question would be, why in a single family home is it 20 feet? And why would we want to shorten that to 17 feet for multifamily housing? Why not be consistent and make it 20?
Well, I wish we had one of the developers here so they could talk to you about the way they lay out their buildings. But it really has more to do with the design and the layout of how the buildings are. Are done than, like in single families. May, may talk about clustering or something like that. But generally, the single families, at least in our subdivisions, are not coming off of private alleyways. Like they can be in a multifamily area. And so that's, that's the only reason why I went with 17, that's because, instead of 20, is because I. Felt like where they were, where it was private, they're doing snow removal and things like that. It's a little bit different than the way we do it in the city and that we could maybe snake it down to 17, but 20 is certainly fine. That's what I had in the first place. And then I thought, maybe we could do a little bit less.
So 17 would work. But that doesn't necessarily mean a setback, the front door facade could be 80 in certain situations. But the driveway to the garage door, proposing 70.
Yes. And, and that's whether it's in the front or the back, or doesn't matter where that garage door is, it is to be. Whatever you decide, it needs to be far enough away that a vehicle couldn't safely park without sticking out into the street or the. This sidewalk. And then the last one is on page 10. And it talks about phasing. And.
There's one about the children's play areas.
Those we already covered by this.
Right. The children's play area, it does say that it has to be in a visible location. And. I know I put something new here about that in the middle of the phase.
Well, that has to be on phase one of the amenities. I think you were talking about amenities coming in earlier in phasing.
Phasing is page 10. Item number 10. Those of you sitting in the audience, if you want to go to the Providence. Website. And you can, you can get the agenda if you go over to, yes, you have it, but I don't know if everybody else does. Good job, though, you can help your neighbors get it. But you can look at what we're talking about, there's a link there and you click on that.
So in the middle of B, says in cases where construction of a proportionate fair share improvement is not feasible. Or would result in incomplete facilities that do not mitigate the impacts of the phase. Construction of the entire improvement may be required. So if somebody was building 30% of their subdivision in phase one, it wouldn't make sense of them to form to build 30% of a clubhouse. So we can require whatever we feel like we need to when it comes to those improvements so that. They come in at a reasonable time. If it gives the city and the developer a chance to work. With each other, and then the other one is that infrastructure improvements that are required to serve the entire project. And I think I didn't save my change, it should say infrastructure and amenity improvements that are required to serve the entire project. May be constructed with a non-adjacent phase, because earlier we say that. We don't want phases leapfrogging. But if we want to be getting amenities in there with that first phase, we may have to leapfrog a little bit because the amenities may be. Down the street a bit from where the first phase is going in. So I apologize.
And sometimes, in the case of. A development that we have here in town. They don't know what size and shape the building's gonna be because it's a commercial pad. And so for them to put all the. All of the asphalt in, they might just have to rip it out.
So those are, those are the. Those are the changes that. I went through and looked at and put into this for you to discuss tonight and then send back to the, the city council. Since you held a public hearing, you really don't need to hold another public hearing on this, you can just make these. Look at them, make the, make your recommendations and send it back to them.
Make the adjustments. So when we send this back to the city council. Can we kind of make this one little change in here that you've made on the phasing?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll call that out differently, like a different color, blue or something, just so they know that.
I'll put it.
You saw it before, but.
I'll underline it.
Okay.
I have a question on the phasing element, so. I live in a development that has amenities coming, but they're not built, and some phases are got some choosing as a frame of reference. But let's say 40% of the development is built out. Is that, and they are offering amenities such as a pool, pickleball courts, playground, and clubhouse. They don't need to do all of those, they just need, they just need to do 40% of what they had proposed. Or what they need to consider implementing all of the amenities they had proposed as part of the development in whole. So is it?
That's, that's your call at this point, I mean, as far as what we're saying, it could go either way.
There is a problem though with requiring it too early. And there is a problem requiring it too late, right? So we need to.
We need to figure out the balance.
So what's the wording that we would use to? To say that?
75% of the properties, residential properties being completed require. 100% of amenities being done? That's a start, but I don't think I'll work. Where else to go with it?
I would think that the residents, you know, you thought they're saying. I'm gonna have pickleball and I'm gonna have all these other things, but they're not showing up.
Right. I mean, if something that would make sense, I don't know what it looks like from a, from a legal perspective or a wording perspective, but would be. At 50% of your development build out, you should have the amenities in progress. So that you know that they're coming, it's not a, you're waiting to the last, you know, the very last house to be occupied, or the last apartment to be occupied. Something to show that. It's a priority.
Well, there is a difference between, I'm thinking, between amenities and infrastructure. So we're talking about two different things here, right?
Yes, infrastructure is different, the only place where they're kind of put together was within B, and I apologize. I must not have saved it after I went back to that change it, where it says. Infrastructure improvements and amenities that are required to serve the entire project may be constructed with a non-adjacent phase. So it's like. Example that Tyler's using, it's my understanding the amenities are going to be a little bit further to the north. And so there may be open ground between. The existing phases and where the amenities are actually going to be located in that. So there may be a phase or two in between the existing phases and the amenities. But rather than wait for those phases to get completed. Even though earlier we say we don't want them to leapfrog, in the case of infrastructure and amenities. We would make the exception that they can go finish those amenities, go get those amenities done in a, in a non-adjacent stage, phase. So that they get completed. When most of the, when a certain percentage, and I don't know, maybe you want to say 50% at 50%. And 100% at 75%. Because I kind of.
I like the idea of 75, 100% issue, I was involved, my son bought property across town. And they had 500 units in there, they didn't finish the amenities till the 500th unit was done. And that was very unfair, these people have been there for four years, they purchased something and they weren't receiving it. So I think. It would encourage the developers, if, by the time they had 75% of development done, that all the amenities. Flat out that way. That way they would plan it and, and amenities would be done, and they still have incentive to finish the rest of it. There's money involved in that, but not so much in the. Question for you, for you on that. The 75% having 100% done. My question would be back to what about, well, how much should they have done at 50% or at 25%? If 100% is done at 75%. Can they wait till the, they, or at that point then do it all together? Or should they have 25% of the amenities put in when they're 25% done? So it's kind of prorated, anyway, I'm just, I'm just digging deeper into the, into the thing.
Thinking that some people would have lived there. For three years, maybe. Before they started on the amenities, if that, if that was the case. So maybe if we stepped it. If we separate amenities from infrastructure. And then on the amenities, say that they need to be.
Well, B says. That each proposed phase shall provide not less than a proportionate share of the required open space recreation facilities. And or dedications for public use concurrent for the development. In cases where construction of a proportionate share. Or proportionate fair share improvement is not feasible or would result in incomplete facilities that do not mitigate the impacts of the phase. Construction of the entire improvement may be required. I don't know if we want to change the make, we'll. It gets a little tricky sometimes when we say will. Because every once in a while, we feel like, no, this isn't the right time to do that, we can certainly understand that. But sometimes on May, people will look at, say, yeah, but it's just May, you can't make me do it, so. So I think it's something that we'll have to really watch in the development agreement as well.
Mayor has a comment.
I lived in a condominium of development years ago, I'm just struggling with the language, we've got to be careful here, how do you say? How do you build three quarters of a clubhouse? Or half a clubhouse, or half a pool? I think it comes down to, I mean, now we're talking about. City code says this much has to be, of amenities have to be included. Probably the best thing to do, and every development's gonna be different, is sit down with the developer, developer says, comes up with a proposed plan to add amenities. In other words, I'm gonna complete the clubhouse and I'll have this done by 25% of the units built. And then I've got a pool and then I've got a park and whatever. And, and come up with a plan at the beginning to meet those 75, 50, 25 thresholds, something close to that. Trying to say, you're gonna put in 25% of the amenities and you get 25% of the units. Is really splitting hairs, it's really hard to.
And perhaps that, that's the wording, is that they, they need to commit. To when they're gonna have. Clubhouses and those kind of things done in the development when they come in for their. When they bring their plan in.
So we're talking about requiring them to come in before the zoning and present their changes, no? For the council, for the city?
This, it's there. It would be at the final, the final, either the final plat or the final development stage. The final development plan, the final site plan, if they're not subdividing, if we've got a big multifamily apartment unit going in and they're not subdividing. It would be at the final site plan stage where they would enter into the development agreement. But I, I totally understand what the mayor's saying, but I really feel like if we don't put that you have to do a certain amount. We won't have enough teeth necessarily to really make somebody in a development agreement. Give us what you may want. I, I don't know, Joe, how do you feel about that?
Who's the one that makes the decision that it's not feasible? Which land use body makes that decision? Is that, is that the administrative one that the public works director is on, or is that the city council, or is that planning?
That makes the determination that something is non-feasible?
Yeah.
None of them. Because we're not involved in price, right?
Say that, that shall be done unless it's determined that it's not feasible, someone's got to make that determination.
That's a, that's a great question, because we don't generally get into price of what feasibility is inside of.
A lot of people aren't aware that there are three land, at least three bodies, that I'm aware of in the city. Planning Commission, the city council, and then there's the administrative one that's got the public works director and.
Right, and, and if you count the variance committee as a, as a land use body. So, yeah.
So the, the planning commission is the body that's in charge of multifamily developments and design standards. So I would probably default that it would be, they would have to come to you and say. Whatever's happened and explain why they can't. Fulfill their obligation. But.
Can we reference it in there that unless it's determined not feasible by the planning commission or by. Or specify the land use body, I'm not so sure it has to be the planning.
Well, we could, we can put it in there. And give. Funding commission the ability to. They would have to show us why they couldn't meet whatever it says for a percentage. And then we could decide, is that something we can do?
I'm not talking about the amenities, well, that is, I'm talking about.
So would you consider that a revised plan if somebody was gonna come in and say, I plan to do this. But it's no longer feasible to accomplish this in this time, I need to revise it. Would we consider that a revised plan? We already have it in the ordinance that says. In the event an approved preliminary or final site plan requires revision by the developer of the site plan. And any revision will be submitted. and any revision will be submitted for approval to the Planning Commission. So it, it kind of goes down that road there. I don't know if that's strong enough. And then it goes on to say, in the event, Ryan, I'm on page eleven, by the way, in the event revision is for a final site plan, all property owners in the development shall be notified in writing by the Planning Commission that a revision has been submitted and will be considered by the Planning Commission. So that's, that's what it says right now on revisions. So she considered an amenity change or the phasing of the amenities, if she considered that a revision to the plan, it definitely would be the Planning Commission, well, the way that's written.
I would caution the Planning Commission to, to talk about feasibility because we generally exempt that out of variances, specifically cost, cost. The, the value can't be included in a variance consideration. Usually the feasibility for one individual is different than another. So then it becomes arbitrary and capricious. And I would be cautious in that realm, but you're the attorney, but I would just be cautious in the feasibility of, if there are conditions that are justifiable conditions, they may present justification of, of conditions. But, but a measurable measure that is equal and fair to all that, that may approach. Because, because if I had a project that I was building and I just overran my costs and now it's not feasible, that's different and are you gonna ask for their, their financials to determine feasibility? Yeah, correct. And, and that's why, that's where I'm trying to make sure that, that we all kind of on the same page there. I would say on this one, I think if, if we're talking that, that they have to complete in proportional share unless, unless that is one building, say for instance, the amenity is one building. You can't divide out that one building to, to seven different apartment complexes. And I think our example may be the Gateway Townhouse. They have a lot complete and their, their clubhouse and pool is far from complete, but their, their build out is much farther in. And I think that's when we say, well, okay, you don't, you only have one large amenity, which is a large amenity, but you should complete that earlier than later. And I think that's the seventy-five you're talking about. And I think that's what the, the language was trying to get to was, if, if you can't phase your amenity, then you've got to do it sooner than later. I think that's what we're trying to get, right?
Words, that's, that's why you're.
And it answered the other question that I avoided and I didn't need to. Cause to me they're interrelated, I had to clear my brain off the first one. Why don't we put language in and I'm just playing with it to the effect that, that the developer will submit a development agreement that meets a criteria and then just, and give a range, twenty-five percent of the completion is X to X. At fifty percent, it's X to X. And, and they don't not have to have a specific number, but they're working. And then they decide within that range what they can do and how, how to do the project.
Depending on what the amenity looks like, whether it's like a swimming pool or something like that.
I was even building on that, Joe. Under ten E where calls for phasing plans shall include the following information, maybe make that a separate item under E that they include some type of plan, schedule, timeline, whatever word is appropriate. Just to give some indication that there's consideration of when they're going to deliver XYZ items.
We have an audience member that would like to make a comment.
Okay. All right, I'll, I'll be quick and I hope this is helpful. But I'm a real estate agent, Erin Taylor and Yisha Peru. And over here.
You have to almost eat the mic.
Okay. Over here in our development, the vineyard development, what I'm seeing them say to my buyers is that the HOA fee is this. And once the amenities are in, the HOA fee is this, it's higher. So I, I think that buyers feel good about that, that makes sense to them. That I'm paying less because this swimming pool isn't there, once the pool's in, I'm paying more. So that's just my.
That's one way to approach it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion about this subject. Scarlett has asked for any suggestions for words that we might use and percentages that we might want to put in there so that we have some wiggle room. The developer can make a case for what makes sense depending on what that is. Mayor.
Can I play the devil's advocate? We have a real life example here in Providence right now, I think it's, it could. The Vineyards Development, the north end of the city where Tyler lives. The developer had laid out the whole development, all three parcels, forty-five acres total, roughly, and had quite a few amenities and a walking path around the whole area. And the way it worked out procedurally is it came to the City Council in two parcels. And you probably understand what the reason was. The first parcel was in a city's annexation plan, the other two were not. But nevertheless, they had done their planning, conceptual designs and research and come up with parks, clubhouse, whatever else is, is going in there, I don't know what, walking paths and everything else. And they came to the city with their conceptual plan. At what point are they vested? And are they gonna be told, well, you have to complete all the amenities that you promised in the first seventeen acre parcel that is being developed today? In other words, do we hold them to that? Follow where I'm going with this?
Yeah.
So that's kind of extraordinary circumstances, so. What's gonna happen come November election, I don't know. They can come back and ask a variety of different petition for a variety of different changes if, if the referendum fails, passes, whatever, however it's worded. So they may have to start all over or they may go back to the original plan they had and finish what they originally wanted to put in place. So how do you deal with that situation?
Welcome, Rowan.
Come in, Rowan. This is Rowan Cecil.
Video.
Okay, feedback, discussion, motion?
I like the idea that Scarlett had, lay out and let the, give them guidelines. Twenty-five percent, twenty-five percent, thirty to fifty percent needs to be completed. And let this, let the staff negotiate that out. But I think we still need to hold true at when the, when there's seventy-five percent of the residences are done, a hundred percent of the amenities need to be done. There's no reason for them to do a good job on the amenities, cause it's coming out of their profit. And the profit, they want to make more profit, they just skip at the end or they drag their feet, wait a couple of years.
Let me flip the story around that I told earlier. Development I moved into was two hundred and twenty-five units when it was completed. They built all of the amenities in the first phase. Why did they do that? To attract buyers, to sell the other three phases and to make a profit.
So what we're trying to avoid is.
In today's market, you can sell everything you can build as fast as you can without the amenities being the attraction. So I still think there ought to be something, I mean, the market conditions are gonna change, but I still think there ought to be something in our code that requires that they meet certain. But if they're, let's just say they're gonna build a five thousand square foot, good sized clubhouse.
Yeah.
We could say it has to be done by the time seventy-five percent of the units are built, but you can't do a part of the clubhouse.
No, no, you can't do a part, but, but they know that by the time they hit seventy-five percent, they gotta have it done. Yes, the market changes. It is changing all the time.
Okay, does somebody want to suggest some wording then? Joe?
I, I play with it on paper, I'm, I'm not good at just hat hawking.
A different word besides feasibility. What would, I think that some, the wording that, Brian, I think the wording that, that Brian's suggesting, I can do that, but a different word besides feasibility would be great. Or, or instead of feasibility, maybe guidelines that would justify a change.
Just one word, Joe, didn't you have a word that's gonna help us? Just one word, instead of feasibility.
I would never use one word.
Never mind, never.
I would say something like, it's not, it's not possible due to the unique circumstances of the project.
Other conditions.
Yeah, unique conditions or circumstance.
Unique conditions, so we got that at two words, make it close.
What about workability instead of feasibility?
Go ahead and define that and, and get it in, in a, in context of three different developments for me.
Off the top of my head, that's what we're looking more at.
I, I mean, you, you get what I mean, that was, yeah.
But feasible is open to, as you said earlier, workable starts to more down to, can we put a pipe through a wetland, like is that actually possible or not, so.
But if we talk about conditions, that leaves it open enough that workable, you know, who's, you know, my idea of workable is different than your idea, is different than somebody else's.
Are the criteria, you know, variance, we've talked about variances. Is the conditions, and you can modify those, but what about the, some of the conditions that are set, you know, variance, a variance is, is very well defined, but it gives it a box to, to have and, and sometimes things fit within a variance and sometimes they don't. Maybe, maybe we look at that language and say, what if that makes sense or that structure makes sense? As a thought. Or not?
Well, you know, we have that meeting in April where we saw those conditions that, that made a variance either fall under that statute of variance or not. So we could look at that, Scarlett, and we've got probably another meeting before the City Council meets, so perhaps we ought to wordsmith this a little bit more and then come back to the next meeting with it.
Why don't you give us twenty words?
So darts at it. Actually, I can, I would, I probably, I like Brian's suggestion and that's usually what I do when I try and put something together for you is go to either an existing state code or an existing code in another community that already has dealt with the problem. So I would probably look at what the variance code requires and then modify it a little bit, because really the variance code, the way that's written, it's highly unlikely that most things would qualify for a variance. So there's a couple of things that we wouldn't be able to, to just verbatim, but it is a very good start to look at the, the things in that code that we could start with, it's, let me just hurry and. There we go. So here's what you have to look at if you're gonna do a variance. And Ryan, I'm in Utah Code ten nine eight seven zero two, its variances. And literal enforcement of the ordinance would cause an unreasonable hardship. And I know that sounds a little open-ended, but it talks about unreasonable hardship later. There are specific circumstances attached to the property that do not generally apply to other properties in the same zone. Granted, the variance is essential to the enjoyment of a substantial property right possessed by other property in the same zone. The variance will not substantially affect the general plan and will not be contrary to the public interest. The spirit of land use ordinance is observed and substantial justice done. And that unreasonable hardship, it has to be located on the property and it comes from circumstances peculiar to the property, not conditions that are general to the neighborhood. And in this case, we'd say not conditions that are general to development, overall development. And a hardship, you may not find an unreasonable hardship if the hardship is self-imposed or economic.
So that, that defines it, I like, I like that definition.
If the developer came to us and said, I've got wetlands on my property, I'm still working with the core, I can't improve my open space until I get the core done, then maybe that's a condition, maybe that would be something you could consider. But if he came to us and said, the economy's tanking, I can't do it, then that's not something, so we could start with that type of wording and, and go from there.
Great. I would like to propose that we table this, do a little bit more work on it and then we'll come back at our next meeting. So in the meantime, we could send out that wording to the commission members to look at it and you'll get back to us.
Can we reference what Scarlett was talking about?
Yes, yes. That's the kind of stuff that we would put in.
That'd be a good idea. I second, motion, do you need a second? Do we table it, move on?
Do we need a motion to table it? Yeah, sorry. Okay, so we need a motion table.
I'm moving the table list to our next meeting.
Okay, second?
Second.
Second by Robert Perry, motion by Rowan Cecil. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so now that Rowan is here, we have, Joe, you'll be voting. And Tyler, you are not. Thank you, but you can participate.
Tyler, don't be offended.
Don't be offended.
You have to attend and then after about a year, they look at you and say, it's okay now, I guess.
I can stop sweating, that's all.
Yeah, don't give up.
We still want your feedback. Well, there's a lot to know and I'll tell you, Scarlett and Ryan both know a lot and it's, it's very helpful to have their feedback. Okay, so we have some administrative actions. And we have a residential inner block development. The commission will consider and may take action on a special review request by Christie Larson. Review request by Christie Larson for a three lots residential inner block development. Located in the general area of 150 East and 200 South.
Do we have a reason that we, that you use the word special?
Yes. You want to come up and bring us up?
Every once in a while, we have one lot within a development or one lot that exists. And the ordinance does allow for. A lot to be done in, in an inner block, the, the way our ordinance is written, but in our city code. In Title 10. Keep forgetting, this isn't my laptop that has touchscreen. Sorry. Title 10, Chapter 14. Section 1 is cluster and inner block development. And it says that cluster and inner block developments. Provide more intensive use of land in further developing existing areas. Requests for cluster or inner block development proposal shall be forwarded to the land use authority for a special review. Process described herein, and then it says that that can be combined. Or can be done at the time the concept plan comes in, and so that's why we're. We have the concept, but, but that's why we're using the term special review on both of these two items.
Anytime we see inner block or cluster, we're going to see special review?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yep, we are. The. Reason why this one is inner block is as you can see on the, the picture. On page three of four. There's only between the areas that touch 200 South. The two areas to the west combined are about 24 feet, I believe, and then the area in the middle is only about 25. And generally. It requires that you have at least 95 feet along the road for a. Or 95 feet at the setback line for a lot, but in these inner block developments, that's the whole point of them is to. Be able to utilize that space. But still have appropriate access into it and out onto a public or a private street, and that's what this would provide. It has been reviewed by Aaron Walker of the fire department. I'm pretty sure I could, yeah, his review is included in the packet. And so. And the applicant is here, Christie's here today. So I guess, and a, a little bit of background. About. Probably 18 years ago. The city council set aside what they called the downtown area. Which mimicked the historic district pretty much, and they didn't want any inner block development in that downtown area. They wanted to retain the, the hobby farm type feel that old Providence had. Those deep lots going back to the middle of the block. A few years ago, Mayor Drew was either on the council or the mayor, so it's been in a fairly recent history. The city council looked at that again and felt like there's a lot of space within the, the city. That is not being utilized. It's more turning into weed areas or people are frustrated with their large lots and, and want to do something with them and they really can't. So they removed that condition that you could not do inner block. Development in that downtown area, so that's why you haven't seen any for quite some time is because this wasn't possible. Now, since that is removed and we can consider it. Then we need to look at the process and go through these special reviews when, when these come in. And this one, all three of the proposed lots, one lot was actually got a home existing on it. And it would be split so that the one lot that has an existing home would, would turn into two lots. And then the third lot is an existing parcel, but it doesn't have a home on it, but it is an existing parcel. So they're taking two parcels and creating three lots, and all three lots would be considered inner block. So. Questions before I sit down, or do you want to talk to the developer?
H4, we got a note here in red about other members of the executive staff. They have additional comments. Were, were that, those comments in, were they important, or did we, should we know about them or?
I did not. Ryan, did you give them any?
I don't know that I had any official ones that I submitted written, but at some point, that's kind of a common one that if, if there isn't comments, there's a 30 day window for any. Other staff to submit. And, but traditionally, the fire department is one of the big ones, engineer, I don't know whether we got. Max's on this one or not.
We don't, generally, it's, generally, you only see my comments, the engineer comments. Or not the engineer, my comments, the fire comments. Every once in a while. Rob will do comments at the, at the concept stage. Once we get to preliminary plat, the rest of the team weighs in a lot more than at the concept. Concept stage, because of just what we're looking at at the concept is basic zoning. Principles, and I will say that. I. Notified the irrigation companies on this one. Both companies did get back to me. The irrigation is within 100 feet, but it's not directly on any of the parcels involved in this subdivision, but it is within 100 feet. And they were notified, and they did get back to me and did not have any concerns with the proposal.
Let's, can we, I ask a couple of questions about. The width of the front of the lot. On the green lot here, we've got more than 95 feet. That's what we're shooting for, it's more than 95 feet. On the yellow one, we don't seem to have, it's an existing lot, I know, but we don't seem to have 95 feet here. Is that correct? I mean, at their front door, we've got 46 and 15 and maybe another 15. Is that correct?
Right, because that.
Is it special? Yeah?
It probably did not have the width requirements when that home was built, whenever that home was built.
Okay, and then, next question has to do with the, the red line down the middle of the green hashes. Is that the current property line? And they're proposing to widen that property out. Right to the edge of that building. The first home all the way to the left. The green property line goes right down, I mean, right on the building.
That's where the existing, you can't see the existing property line. Under the green line, but it's sitting on the existing property line. The red line is actually the, the property line that is between the two. That currently exists between the purple piece and, and the. Green piece, but the west side of that green piece is sitting on the property, the existing property line.
Okay.
And again. The east side of that is that. Is that the property line? Yes. Yep.
Okay, so what's the red line? I'm sorry, I'm.
The red line is the property line, or no, the east side is not.
I'll pull up the current one.
Yeah, the east side is the current property line. The, so the current property has. Two, the current property is the yellow, the purple, and. The east side of the red line to the green line. That's that current parcel right now. So it's got the one little finger in the middle that's got 23 feet on it that goes out and touches the road. And then it's got this other slim little finger that's probably 12 feet that goes out and touches the road. And then the green parcel, in reality, it has about 12 feet that goes out.
Okay, so what is the current? Setback on that side, would you guess, about 12 feet or so? On the side of that first house, parcel number 0016. Currently, what is the setback on that house?
I didn't go out and measure it because I don't know exactly where the property line is, but looking at it, I would say it's like five feet, maybe. Looking at it on the parcel viewer.
Now, today, I mean, what we're proposing is taking that to zero, from five to zero?
No, they're not changing where the line is.
I just want to be clear on that.
Yeah, they're not changing where that line is. They're not changing where the building is. The building is already considered a non-conforming structure. Non-conforming, not by, I always keep those mixed up, I apologize. Anyway, it's considered. That building is already considered non-conforming, and what this development is doing is not changing any of the property lines. So it's not increasing the non-conformity of that property.
How does, on the purple lot, how does somebody get into that? What's the access to that? Yes, yeah.
Maybe it's time.
So there are a couple of different.
I'm sorry, my name's Christie Larson. So there's a couple of different options that we're. That we were hoping for. We've actually, you would know this because your son. We debowed the, the outbuildings here, and so we can come through either and, and create a road either on the green. Or the yellow, or we could even do a U. Between the two, just whatever. Basically, there's no outbuilding there that you see, just under the point 312 meters. Yeah, so, so there can be an access point. There's definitely flexibility there.
So why should we have, why, why should we? I thought there was an ordinance against inner block, you're saying it's.
No, it's been changed.
Been changed again. It's been changed back and forth a couple of times. Okay, so I, I'm not going to ask you these questions.
Sit down then? Is there anything that you want to add, Christie?
Well, if, if it's helpful, our plan here isn't, I mean, I, I have a brother that I'm really close to. That I would love to live right next to me, and we have parents that are getting elderly that we need to take care of. And so the original plan was to have two parcels and then have my parents live in a less than 1,200 square foot or whatever that. Secondary residence on a parcel is, which we could do, we could move, we could just move our line. And then have the green and, and the purple be together, but you know, for future reasons to resell or whatever it is, it'd be nice to have three, so.
So there's nothing about this that doesn't meet our existing. Code.
Okay, I, so I want to say something to that. Let's back up. Let's put the inner block development restrictions back into place. They were pulled out. We had, my next door neighbor wanted to take his lot and divide it into four, because he was having feasibility problems. Money, money problems, and the neighbors came out in droves and said, no, we don't want any more inner block development. Very much against inner block development, but you're saying that we can do it, it's, it's, it is on the books. It's possible to do it with the current statutes. I got a couple of issues with this one. One is the width of the lots, and yes, there was a mistake made way back then, or just an oversight or not even that. Big issue is the lot that is not showing, the lot that is not part of this, and that is parcel number 0019. Okay, that's the one right in the middle between the yellow and the green. That is a known drug house, and it's been in that situation. I know personally that that's a known drug house. And I've known that at least three years that it's been in that condition. And all I can see here is chopping up more. I can see putting a house back there on the green. I can see, let, let me state this clearly. The security that goes on, on the, in our cities is like 95% of it is by us as citizens. If there's a problem in the neighborhood, one of us usually sees it. If one of our neighbors goes down with a heart attack or whatever, we're the one to see it. That green lot there is, is not. You can't see what's going on there. And so it's not part of the community, and so I strongly disagree with, with this type of development. Is there a way that they can use Peacock Lane? Or is it private, or they can, and they get buy shares off of it? I believe it's, yeah. What can we do with the Peacock Lane?
It'd have to go through Gurkies.
Because Peacock Lane is a private lane, and in order for it to meet our ordinances. It would either have to be turned into a public road and meet public right of way standards. Or the entire development would have to go, the entire area would have to go in together and, and come to you and talk about creating a. Planned unit development back there that would allow a private road to service more than, right now, the way. It raises a driveway, a private driveway has to meet fire restriction, or not restrictions, fire code minimums. But it can service two homes, two properties. But once you get past two properties, which technically Peacock Lane already does.
They're at four, correct?
Yes, but that, that happened before those rules were in place, so Peacock Lane is, it is, it is what it is. But we can't increase the non-conformity. You can, you can change a non-conforming use. If you're changing it so that it conforms, but you can't add to the problem. So we can't add anything to Peacock Lane, even if the neighbors were okay with that, without figuring out how to make Peacock Lane. Be a legitimate, either city right of way or a legitimate private road, so.
Development route.
Yeah.
So there is no access to the. To the purple property?
Not off a Peacock Lane, no.
And not off the main, main street, not off the second south either?
Well, unless it, it would share the driveway with either the yellow parcel or the green parcel, because you can have two, two parcels share the driveway. So they can.
So the point 272 acre green parcel would not really be point 272, because it would be servicing as a road, or it would be servicing as a road. For that one purple, and then one in the purple becomes inner block, or you know, inner block behind an inner block. We're talking about hiding. I don't know, I just, that whole area. You've got a challenge in front of you, and I don't like this one, and I'm just.
Well, all of those pieces are more than a quarter acre. And one is a half acre. So single family. Traditional. Is the half acre, no, quarter acre. And the three point, or the 312. Acre, what is that one? That would be considered. Yeah? And then the half acre. So those are pretty good sized lots. But the green one includes the driveway. That's part of that.
And they can give an easement. For ingress, egress. Because the green lot needed to retain the acreage to make its lots stay, yeah, they can have the whole driveway be on their lot. But they can do a recorded easement that allows the purple lot. To use that driveway and the green lot can't take that easement away. It would be a permanent easement, so. But they can retain it if they need to keep the, the square footage to meet a, a minimum lot size.
Okay, so this meets our ordinance right now.
As far as zoning goes, it meets the ordinance right now, yes.
Okay. Okay. So. Any more discussion on it? any more discussion on it?
The, the fire marshal really signed off with the idea that they could get the fire trucks up and down the 24 foot wide street to fight a fire back there on the purple lot, right? That's what we're saying. Shake your head up and down.
I'll look at his letter really quick. He's saying, the fire marshal's saying, um, when he's talking to access, he's saying that access must reach to within 150 feet of all exterior areas of a home. So not just the existing home, but all of the future homes too. No, and it must be no less than 20 feet in width. And must be designed and engineered to support 75,000 pounds. It is approximately 340 feet from the edge of the road of the asphalt on 200 South to the South fence. And so it would be, could be much longer than 150 feet around a proposed structure. Depending on the configuration of the lot and what is constructed, part of the driveway may, may need to be considered fire apparatus access and a turnaround may be required. And we do that on big lots right now, even when they have oodles of frontage. Um, those lots up along the east side of Little Baldy, they're not the only ones, but they're the ones we're dealing with mostly right now. All of those homes have to be set back at least 150 feet because of the power lines easement and the way it worked out with the slopes and everything. So all of those homes are, when they come in, we have to work, the fire department works with them for a driveway that is accessible and with a turnaround. And even before the Little Baldy, we would have that on some of our big lots, as people wanted to set them back farther. Interblock has, interblock wasn't allowed in the downtown area, but it didn't ever go completely away. If you were outside the downtown area, on the north side of 200 North or the south side of Fifth South or up on the East benches, there's some areas in there that, that we did have people do. Not a full-blown interblock like this, but put a house behind, back in. Most of them did have a wider frontage than just the, I mean, most of them, the, the first house at least had the full width on the street, and it was probably just the the second house that just went in with a driveway. But, so, so interblock never totally went away. It was just in the downtown area, it went away for a while. And, but, but it's a little, there will still be as we go through the preliminary plat process and the final plat process and the construction drawings, there will still be um, more requirements that will come along within those processes that the the applicant will have to make sure that they can, that they can provide, and those accesses some of that access may not even be determined. I mean, the general access will be, but whether the, the turnaround or is going to have to be put in or not, on some of that, we won't be able to determine that until the site plan actually comes to the, for the house, the site plan for the actual house. Not the, not the development plan, but the site plan for the actual house. And when at that time we rely on the fire code and, um, work with people on their driveways and creating T-turnarounds or circular accesses or things like that. On the cluster, or not the cluster, cluster is a special development too, but on the inner block, it does say that, um, the land use authority may impose modifications or conditions concerning the following development features to the extent that such modifications or conditions are necessary to ensure compliance with the criteria of the, the ordinance, of the code, so. So you can look at this, and, and even if you don't like it, Brian, you can look at it and you can say, I don't like this. And I see some safety problems with it, but if we can do this and this and this, you can put some conditions with it so that you make sure that, that we're protecting health and welfare of the current and future citizens. So, so there is, that's one thing that's a little different with the with the special review is you can look at that and you can look at some modifications or conditions that are necessary to ensure compliance with the criteria. And the criteria is that it complies with the requirements is consistent with the object, or complies with the requirements in the title. It is consistent with the objectives and purposes of the zoning title. It's designed to be compatible with surrounding land uses. And it's designed to be compatible with the physical features, excuse me, features of the site on which the proposed development will be placed. So in order to achieve those goals, you can look at the site and location, the size and location of the site, the street and road cap, capacities in the area, the ingress and egress to be adjoining public streets, location and amount of off-street parking, internal vehicular circulation. This is one time where you might look at them and say, since you don't have street-side parking, because you're clear back in there, you gotta have a bigger driveway, you gotta be able to park three more cars than normal driveway or something. I mean, those are some of the things that you could look at to mitigate the fact that, that they don't utilize the city street the way everybody else does. So, so there are some things that, that you can look at to make the development as a, as positive as can be, so.
Well, these three lots could have belonged to three different people. And they could come in and build a house on, on those.
The fire marshal says that we could get a line all the way out to the purple if the house was in the right location. That they could fight the fire.
But, I don't say they want.
I don't know that the, I don't know that the fire marshal is, is in that far in the conclusion because it's still in the concept phase. But I think that he's saying, these things have to be taken care of when a preliminary plat is presented. He had, they have to fulfill all of the items he's listing.
Just right now, nobody knows exactly what they're gonna do on that. Just that is.
So I don't, I don't believe he is saying that that all of that, what you, what you're, yeah, so.
The, what I read that fire marshal report, it was not conclusive, I mean, it was kind of wishy-washy, and so I'm wondering, you know, you say, okay, the concept is good, we're not approving the subdivision at that point over here.
It's not a subdivision.
This is.
We're not even approving the concept plan. The, the, you're looking at what their conceptual plan is so that you can see what's going on there. But they really can't design their concept plan until they know if you're gonna put any mitigation or conditions on them. So what you're looking at is their proposed idea of how to split this off and achieve what they would like to do. But before we can go further, we need to know from the special review what other criteria they may have to meet. And that's why Aaron's letter is kind of open-ended, because like I said, even on approved lots, we can't, they have to still come in and design their driveways or their accesses so that fireworks, or they might have to put sprinkler systems in, and, and there's a whole bunch of, there's a whole laundry list that we go through on individual lots, once they come in with their house plans, that we can't that we can't do before they come in with their house plans, because we don't know exactly how big the home is gonna be, or uh, how far back off the property it's gonna sit. So that's why, that's why it's kind of open-ended. They still have to meet all those requirements. They'll have to meet, if you put some mitigation strategies or any conditions on it, they'll have to meet those, and then once they know what, once they know what they need to meet from you, then they can sit down and they can design their, um, they can fine-tune their concept. Then when the staff can look at that and use the criteria that you've given us, and make sure that that meets it, and that they go on to preliminary plat stage. And you'll see that preliminary plat when they get to that point. So really what you're doing is establishing criteria for them to move forward with the subdivision. You're not approving a concept plan at all. In fact, the ordinance even says that, that the special review does not vest that their concept, that their subdivision will be approved. It just gives us the guidance.
Is there, is there a subdivision gonna go on in this one or not? Or is it already subdivided and already looks like it's not a plat?
No, it's not already subdivided like that.
So subdivision will become part of.
There's two lots right now. There's the, the purple and yellow.
And the green.
And the green.
So there are three lots.
Well, there's, there's not, the, the yellow and the purple are one block right now.
Yeah, alright.
They're one lot.
Yeah, that's why there's only two lots. The purple and the yellow comprise one existing parcel. I should call them parcels, because they're not lots in a subdivision yet. And then the green is an existing parcel. So.
There's not so purple.
The question I have, I apologize. Um, is why is, why is the green included in this, in this process? Why isn't it just a subdivision or, or an authorization of, of taking parcel 18 and dividing it up into two lots? What, can Christie answer that?
Well, the green is included in the special review because the green doesn't have any frontage. Uh, it doesn't have the 95 foot, foot width along the city street.
The green is already an existing lot.
It is.
So you don't need to do anything with the
The, the only way to get to the purple lot is through the green lot.
Well, you've got that 24, you've got the 24 feet in the front between parcels 19 and, and 20. That's the existing, that's the existing one. And then they've got a small, it's like about 10 feet on the far side on the, I don't know the direction on this, I assume it's west, the parcel 19. And they could get an easement in conjunction with 17 to use a common driveway there to widen it. I don't know why, I, I'm interested in why the green lots included in this special review.
I do.
State your name again.
Again, it's, it's Christie Larson, and, um, as part of this, I mean, I, I included it because, one, we're moving that line to create enough so that there's, the fire marshal can get through with the 20 feet that's needed to access on the driveway. So that's one reason I included it. Um, and, I mean, it's taking some of this other lot. But you're right, where, I, I mean, technically I could just move that line, I think. And it would be a lot that could be usable and buildable, I think, without subdividing into three. But the only reason we want to subdivide into three is to give my parents their own space and to give their, their own lot space. And, I mean, I understand the safety concern, if we need to put lighting. I mean, I understand that I am the role of the developer and I'm happy to conform so that, I'm sorry, I'm not a very public speaker and I'm pretty nervous. But, um, I understand that that's a need I need to fill if, because inevitably they will be sold to other people. And we don't know who those people are. And even though I have purple hair, I promise I'm not sketchy. But, but, um, anyway, my point is, um, I understand that and I'm willing to conform and make it so that it improves the city. We really want to, you know, be a positive impact. So does that answer your question? With why it's included is?
Well, the issue is that it doesn't have the frontage that's required for a lot. So it, it, it meets the criteria for an inter, interlot.
What does it have?
The green.
The green.
The way it currently is, it only has like 14 feet on, on this side here, so.
But it's existing.
Correct, so we could just, because I own the two, I could just, right, correct. I, I mean, I thought I needed to include it to establish the vision, but I could take it off if you want. Correct, yes. That's right, but it is split.
Is the building, building permit trigger frontage requirement? Thank you. I, I, I refer to you as Christie, I didn't remember your last name, I don't want to be a slave for this one.
I think that, I think the problem we would have, Joe, is the the emergency access back into that lot. If it, if we, if they could only have 12 feet, that would make it pretty difficult. So they, they would at least have to do a boundary line adjustment in order to get a driveway wide enough to make it, so it's a, that an emergency vehicle can get back there.
Or an easement.
Yeah, or the.
Just to get the width.
Right. Yeah. But the, the bit, to answer your question on the building permit, building permit, if they weren't coming in, if they weren't doing a subdivision, somebody just came in and said, I wanna build on this. Building permit would trigger all of this discussion about what they would need to do for access, and where to put their house, and how to get sewer back there and all that kind of stuff.
So that would still have to come to this body. And somebody else owned that green piece and wanted to build on it because it is a flat lot. So it would come to this body anyway. I know you had your kind of quite a while ago.
I was just, I was just gonna clarify that the the purple lot actually has that 10 foot, but Joe called that out, that has the 10 foot, that goes all the way out to, to the street. So on the I was gonna see if that mattered, but, good. But what do you think about this time? This subdivision or this concept plan?
The, the concept plan sounds acceptable in terms of complying with the, the current zoning. I mean, the, your earlier points about interblock development, they are, and the the law is what it is right now, the decision was previously made, so in terms of the desire to subdivide this to build three homes is a lot more in line with the character of the neighborhood than wanting to build townhomes back there or something other weird, and something else that could, could happen, so. I, I would think that in terms of what's a good outcome for this, that is a pretty positive outcome for whatever interblock development could be, and the key is just making sure that everything's done in a safe manner.
Thanks.
What we're looking at as a body is, are there some special conditions that need to be met in order to utilize these lots the way um, Christie wants to, to do them? Uh, I, I'm not sure at this point that I have the expertise to put special conditions on, on those. From the analysis, it looks like it meets all of the conditions. And as they move ahead to say, this is what we're gonna build on here, this is how we're gonna do it. Then the, the engineer, the city engineer, the, the fire marshal, everyone will look at that and say, here's what you need to do in order to make it totally safe. I had to put sprinklers in my home because of the square footage and because of where it is, and I.
Fire truck access.
Right. Because you couldn't get a big ladder truck up my driveway. Or F-150 will even go up there without making a backup. So, um, I don't know that I have the expertise to, to make that decision. So it meets all the codes.
It does, but let's back up one from the codes. You know, what, what are we here as a body to consider? And then, in my mind, is the, the look and the feel of Providence, to continue that on it, what's it going to be? Obviously, there's gonna be condos and townhouses, that's part of, and it's working out fine. But as far as flag lots go, I don't think that adds to and, and I'm sorry, Christie, but I don't think that adds to the look and the feel of Providence. For instance, the Old Rock Church sits there on Main Street. If it was a flag lot, uh, it would not be, uh, it wouldn't, wouldn't be valuable at all. It would not be kept up. Uh, a lot of, and we don't know what's being kept up out there. The look and the feel of Providence is that people have got pride in their properties. And that if you hide the property, if you hide the building that the property is on, there's, the pride can go out of it. And the problem I see is that parcel number 16 there, owned by Cordell Wright, the pride has gone out of that house. owned by Cordell Wright, the pride has gone out of that house. It's a two-bedroom, one-bath house, very small, not kept up. The parcel number one, one-nine, that's the drug house. The pride has gone out of that. And I think what I'm seeing being requested here is that we continue those types of homes over there. Instead of being on the street and very small, we're going to put them way back. People can't see them. People can't help with the safety. Like, the look and feel of Providence is not written into this plan at all. I don't think. I think it gets way off.
The drug house is very seeable.
What, the, uh, nineteen?
Yeah, the one, the blue house.
Yes, the blue house.
It's not hidden.
It's not.
And it still is what it is.
And people don't take care of it. And one of the reasons it's small and the lot is relatively small. But I don't know why else they don't, you know, the last four owners there haven't kept, haven't kept. Anyway, not going to be able to see these other ones. And if you look around and you look at the flag lots, or a number of flag lots in the state right now. And I've investigated and looked hard at it because I've dealt with this inner block work personally. And I, you can't see the houses. Uh, there's one over on Main Street, all the way out to Second North. They have a parking issue there. There's no place to park on the street. And the house in front has no park, place to park anymore because the only parking area, uh, they don't have a garage. And so the only parking area is right in front of the house. They have one spot. And then the people that live back on the flag lot, I've never seen the house. Never, ever seen the house. Don't know anything about it. I just know that there's going to be, it's, uh, Second Nor-, uh, sorry, Second North and Main Street. Uh, I think it's a Johnson home is across the street, the old one, the big, uh, old green.
I live right next to that.
Yeah. And you, you live across the street from this flag.
It was a house in the front.
Right.
There's new owners there and they're fixing it up inside more. So I wasn't going to comment, but.
You don't have to.
Introduce yourself.
By the way, I think you ought to ask the members of the audience for that input since you, they introduced the public comment portion. You said, hold your comments. So I, I'd like to comment on what Brian's saying. I've moved into neighborhoods and I've moved into new houses and I've moved into old neighborhoods. When new people move in, neighborhood improves. And you have a drug house, more sets of eyes you have in that neighborhood, better. Those are my, my two cents. Um, we've done things to improve our house where we are now and neighbors have looked at our house and the improvements we've made, done the same. I've lived, moved into a new old neighborhood, redid the whole outside of the house. Neighbor started painting all of their houses. So I know it's an older part of town. I walk six days a week with the dogs. I walk down the street all the time. I know exactly which house you're talking about, Brian. The deputies will say, when we have a complaint, we investigate it within the law, we do everything we can. But our source is sets of eyes on the problem, to your point. So what we're asking here is more sets of eyes. Just my two cents.
In front, behind, and on site. Um, okay. We have citizens here. Anybody want to, only, uh, maybe a dime's worth?
Somebody's.
It's just two cents.
Somebody's coming up and I'm going to get comment.
Yes.
My wife is a native of Providence. She left here sixty years ago and finally came back. And she's looking to have these inner law developments. She's looked, ever since I've been on the planning commission, she said, when are we going to start being able to put houses back here?
Well, as, as we run out of land and places for people to build homes, and here we have an individual who's purchased this home and wants to make it better than it was. Um, and people deserve to be able to sell their property and improve it. Anybody want to say anything? Okay.
One other consideration that you might look at is that parcel eleven, uh, it's a Ballard property, is also inner lot. So there's already a hall.
Well, that whole area has been chunked up and sold off. And honestly, what else would you do with that piece? Is what I look at.
Raise cattle.
Listen, the guy, the, the guy that lives off Peacock Lane tried that. And he did not feed it enough. And it was always bellerian. I'm, I'm sure the city got lots of calls.
Unlike the chickens, huh?
Well, that poor calf was, he just was starving it to death. But I, he was going to feed it. But you, you can't feed it a quarter of a bale a day and expect it to stay in its pen. It was always laundering the neighborhood. So, yes.
Again, Christie Larson. Um, and with all due respect, Mr. Marble, um, I just don't, I mean, you just pointed out two homes that are not kept and they're right on the road. With all the frontage you want, I just don't see the correlation personally. And.
When the, when, when the city council, or when this came before the city council, about, I want to say about twelve years ago, on the parcel question, it was downtown. They wanted, they were running out of money. And so he wanted, the, the owner wanted to leave town, lost his job, you know, wanted to leave town. So to leave town and to take any kind of money with him, he needed to split one lot into four. And it could have been split. But let me tell you, every neighbor within about a, a mile came marching up to the city council and said, we do not want inner block development. Does not add to our city. It detracts from our city. I can't tell you one in the city that looks, that, that I think is appropriate. That it's, it's a pride thing. You know, it, the, people in Providence, for the most part, have pride in their properties. And I think the mayor was really good about saying, if I paint my house, the guy next door puts a new, you know, driveway in or whatever. It's just that's what we do.
And I would love to facilitate that. We're, we're planning on making, you know, great presentable places to live.
But we'll never know. Because I can't see them. I can't see.
The Ballards will know.
They will. Even, uh, I have.
They live in a nice house that's inner block.
I, I have a friend that I think sold this to you. And he lived in that yellow, uh, on that yellow parcel, that house there. I never knew what his house looked like. I knew what his front door looked like and what his driveway looked like. I couldn't tell the rest of the house. I couldn't be a good neighbor and keep my eye out. All I could do was look up his driveway. Maybe I could see the, you know, the front door is now.
True. Well, it's, it's a weird configuration. No matter what.
What is your plan for access to the purple lot? Where you talked about two options and possibles of, but what's your, do you have a, a specific plan that you're thinking?
Well, great question. I think it a lot depends on the fire marshal. Um, and that's why we have three different options that we have considered, which would be to either through the green, uh, just a one-way um, or through the yellow, a one-way, or an entire U shape through the green and the yellow, which would then branch off to this, um, purple one as a, you know, a regular length driveway, you know, assuming this U acts as a street that goes all the way through.
So it would almost be a collector road.
What does that mean? A collector road?
Well, a collector road is, is one road that serves several homes. And so it collects all the traffic onto.
Yeah. And if, I mean, if we need to do that, I'm sure that the fire marshal would prefer that instead of having to turn around their big trucks and stuff, but.
Well, and you would want them to do that too because you, if you had a fire, you want them to come in there.
Correct. Yes.
My next question is, um, if I, if I bought the purple lot, half acre lot, sounds great. Um, if I bought the purple lot, but, but the yellow lot, we were no longer friends. Hopefully we would be, but you know, let's assume we weren't. And I came through your property to my property, what prevents you from putting a trailer to stop me? And who enforces that? Because the city, it's not private, it's private property. The city won't be there. So we won't be there to enforce it. Just so that you know.
If, if I personally was not friends with the yellow people and I was a purple person.
You had purple hair. I should have given, I should have given you the purple lot.
I've been all of those colors. But I would ask my nice friends, the Ballards, to upgrade their road with me because I do know it's really hard to get back there in the wintertime. And I would have access.
The Ballards are back behind to the south.
Yeah.
On Peacock Lane.
Yeah.
Yeah. And you can't, the city doesn't allow another one to be added to there.
Well, I think it does. It's just that it would have to be upgraded. The entire road and it moves all the way around. It would be quite a problem.
Yeah, okay.
But if I didn't like the yellow people that much, yeah, I'm going.
I just, I, I just, I think that one of those comments I would say is the flag lot, the green one has, has its own access. The yellow has a dedicated access. The purple doesn't. And that's the, if I had a problem with it, and I understand that, uh, Mr. Marbles, but, but my question becomes how do I define and make sure that the city can protect the purple people um, to be able to always access their property? Does that make sense?
Yeah. And if we were to, um, no parcel of, you know, want either the yellow or the green to have city road access or whatever, that would also be fine.
Or, or the, or the, the green that comes out is purple and green. You can own jointly or however. I, I just, I just think that.
Very flexible.
Purple needs to have some.
Right next to my brother and my mom and dad.
Just, just constructive when it comes down the road some.
Okay, thank you.
Well, you can also get a legal description because I'm in the process of doing something with someone on a road. And you'll own part of it and I will own part of it.
There you go.
And, and we have an attorney drawing that paperwork out.
True.
With all of the legal descriptions that go with it. So if I die, people know what's going on. If he dies, people know what's going on.
Yeah, I would love that on the purple and green. I mean, it makes the most sense if it weren't for that house right next property line. If that one makes the most sense.
So, so there are ways to do that.
Yeah.
But just be aware that you would need to do that.
Have you, have you approached Cordell Wright about selling this property?
I have, and he doesn't want to.
He's getting old enough. I mean, like, we're all grown.
Where Chet's brother lives, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Chet's brother, yes.
Have not, I have talked to Chet's brother. But I can't say that.
Go have a, go, go knock on his door.
Well, here's my question. If I convince nineteen and sixteen to sell me their homes, will you approve? I'm just kidding.
Nineteen is in dire straits. Okay? There might be available. Sixteen might be tired of it and had, and had enough.
I do happen to know that his son is interested in that property from what? Um, I think his name's Andrew told me.
Cordell Wright's?
Yes. Oh, I believe it will be an.
I've asked him and he doesn't want to sell it, so.
So does he want to buy the, the, the lot right behind him? His flag lot combined back in.
Same problem.
No, no, no. I'm talking about doing it all one, just make it, because that's what it was. It was one parcel at one time. You know, sixteen and then the one behind him, which I can't read. That was all one parcel at one time. And then somebody flagged it. Then they didn't develop it.
Yes.
I, from a practical point of view, we, my neighbor's house to my west got on fire in November or October. After they started using firewood stove. And I'm in a cul-de-sac that is pretty wide, probably ninety feet, hundred feet wide. It's, it's larger than most cul-de-sacs. And I was actually surprised. There were six firewood vehicles in that cul-de-sac to, and, and it was full. It was completely full. And so my comment is, I, even though the fire marshal approves this, I think it needs conditional use that, that takes that into consideration, safety. My own personal view is, I, I don't like the concept of green lot included. I don't mind the, the yellow and the purple. I under, I understand that. And I understand that the city council has voted to allow inner-city development. And that's beyond my purview as a planning commission member. Wants the city council to does that. I, I agree with you, Brian, on, on the concept that it's at the city council, though, in my perspective. I, I'd move that we end the discussion and take a vote.
Um, I will entertain a motion on this piece of property.
On a concept?
It's a special review.
Oh. Special review on a concept plan.
On the request by Christie Larson.
I have a question. We approving Mrs. Larson's request. That would be.
We would be approving her request, which gives her the ability to move on.
Okay, that's.
To do, to continue with her development, but she will have to meet all of the, all the requirements from the city engineer and from everyone that's involved in order to make it work.
I know that we approve Mrs. Larson's request for this development with the, uh, ability that she must follow city ordinances in all development. And she goes forward with this. Be more than that.
Yes, because it has, um, it has conditions, we talked about the condition and the findings of that. If you'll just add that in there.
Including the findings of act as found in our, uh, now, it's, it's in here. Yes.
And that's guarded. Okay. So we have a motion by Rowan Cecil to accept Christie's request for a special review. Do I have a second? I'm second.
My condition.
Okay, so the motion dies for lack of a second. Um, I need some help. What do we go, where do we go from here?
Move, we table it to the next meeting and announce the fact just a little bit more.
Okay.
We'll see again that motion.
Okay. So we have a motion to table it and um, perhaps get some additional information and think of, and see what else we might put on it. Like I said, I, I don't feel qualified to put conditions on it at this point in time. So I have a motion by Joe. And a second by Rowan Cecil. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We're going to be thinking on that one more. Okay. Okay. That's okay. Thank you. Okay, item number three, special review, right-of-way width and street profile. The planning commission will consider and may take action on a special review request by Jody Robbins to reduce the right-of-way width and modify the street profile for thirty-three lot residential cluster development located in the general area of three hundred north, one hundred east. This is the old Lloyd Bear property. Remember, we turned it down and the city council, um, gave them, they voted it that they could do it. This is a development that is similar to the one, uh, over at the end of Fifth South and Garden Drive. Scarlett, you want to bring us up to speed?
So, again, Jody's asking for a cluster development, the other one was just ask, was asking for an block. This one's asking for cluster. The difference, there's a difference between this cluster development and the planned unit development. The planned unit development talks about, um, thirty-five percent open space and they have to provide amenities, things like that. Um, in the cluster development, again, what he's asking for is to reduce the street width, the street right-of-way. He's also asking to only put sidewalk on one side of the street. But, again, you have the ability to look at the size and the location of the site, the street and road capacities in the area, the ingress and the egress, the location and the amount of off-street parking. If we're reducing the street width, then that pretty much says no parking on the streets. If people can't park on the streets, where.
No parking on the streets within the development.
Right. So people can't park on there safely because it would reduce it below twenty feet required for fire access, then where are they getting parked? So maybe if you choose to, allow the cluster idea, then maybe you say, well, there's gotta be off-street parking, additional off-street parking, more than two units per, um, single-family residence, because that's, that's what the code requires right now. There's also the internal vehicle circulation that you can look at. You could talk about fencing and screening and landscape separation, usable open space, building mass and location, signs, lightings, noise, vibration, air pollution, other environmental influence, set backyard and area requirements, and others as deemed appropriate by the land use authority. So the land use authority can't be extremely unreasonable and require the sun and the moon, but you can actually sit down and really look at um, what makes good sense for development in one of these special reviews and look at, like I said, perhaps you want, the one that really jumps out to me is the off-street parking, because you can't park, you can't really safely park even on thirty-five feet of asphalt if you got cars on both sides and expect people to travel a road for a very long distance. And so when you, when you reduce the whole um, right-of-way down to less than thirty-five feet, then, um, you really aren't going to be able to have street-side parking. So I, I would, my personal opinion on it, I would strongly look at requiring some type of additional off-street parking. The other things, you can, Jody's here, and he's probably got some ideas that to talk about with you on, on his plans and everything, so I'd let it go from there, but again, keep in mind that, um, you're not approving his concept plan, you're not approving a subdivision, and, and the approval of the special review doesn't give him any vesting in the subdivision. It just sets the criteria and the guidelines for us as staff and Jody as the developer to be able to design the concept and then move forward with the subdivision process based on, on those conditions that you're gonna look at. So, anyway, pretty much the same type of discussion as the other, it's just that this is, the idea is that it's clustering and instead of inner block that's, that's separated out.
Scarlett, a portion, uh, for me to get an idea of this, uh, the street that, uh, called it, what it lives on, what's the width of that street?
Well, I should knew, I, that Spring Creek Road.
I believe Spring Creek Road is twenty-nine feet, it's almost thirty, right?
It is now, that we're, when we went through and.
I think it's twenty-nine or thirty feet, somewhere in there. Um, so, at that point, imagine that if we added a sidewalk, that would take another, so if we're at thirty feet wide, we add a sidewalk, but we add a park, we, we need park strip in order for snow to go, because not only is there a parking problem with thirty-five, but there's also a snow problem and, and there's no place for that snow to be stored at this point unless it's on top of a sidewalk, or they have a, a gap, so, and, and some of that, you know, if you have a small enough road, you can build that, but then you suffer from other things. Um, some of the other ones we've, we've seen required, you know, parking somewhere or, or some other spot for some of these other other problems that may arise in a, in a narrow area.
Because when I look at a, a fire truck trying to turn into that circle, it seems like that would be awfully tight.
Um, I think the, the thought is that the fire truck would, that they would create a T, with the fire truck, not a circle, but.
At the end, there's the, there's a hammerhead, but the cul-de-sac, I think she's talking, the radius.
How to get into the cul-de-sac. I see, okay.
I would guess that the design of this isn't that far along to, to formulate the radius.
You know, if I imagine in my mind, the road up there, Spring Creek Parkway.
Spring Creek Road.
It's pretty narrow to get one of those good trucks around it. Okay, Jody?
My name's Jody Robbins, I'm the developer for this project. The reason that I even decided to ask you guys for, um, the cluster consideration was during the rezon public hearing that you guys were all a part of, some of the biggest concerns that we had were water management and use. I believe that one of you said that if we, if he would have known that it was going to be fifty-five and older, that he would have considered approving it. So, in order to be a good neighbor, be a good member of, of the community, we've held good on our, our plans to continue with fifty-five and older. But, uh, in order to, uh, accommodate that type of, of community, looking around the community and including the, the fifty-five and older development at Ballard Springs, their road profile is shockingly similar to the road profile that we're asking for. We, the other part that people had concern about other than use was, um, the water management. We have not received our Geotech survey back, but we're assuming that it's a hazard water table, meaning that there's water table within, within twelve feet of, of the main level, or of, of native. When you have that one high-water table, the goal is to maximize the permeable surfaces in the development by allowing, by maximizing that permeable surface, it keeps the groundwater where it falls and it goes in where it falls instead of taking it to one spot on, on the development and dropping it off there and eventually into the stormwater system, so that's the reason we're asking for the cluster and in turn the, uh, lesser right-of-way is to maximize the permeable surface and, and what we're asking for is actually about a forty percent decrease in impermeable surface in the right-of-way area. It allows, um, by allowing this other road profile that is in similar, uh, developments that are fifty-five and older, it makes it so more water is going to stay where it is, addressing the fear of, of a few of the community members. We also, with the slope of, of the ground there, we're planning on doing a private sewer system and will be up to the city standards and everything, but we're planning on doing, since it's private utilities, it will be a private road on top of that, which means it's not the city that's clearing the snow off of there, it's, it's the HOA that is cleaning the road, that is cleaning all of the driveways with, um, so, and, and doing all of the landscape and every, all, all of that maintenance. And, uh, we actually have a slightly different plan from this one. The fire review mentioned that thirty lots can be on, on one access, so we've dropped two of those lots off to accommodate that already, but with the snow removal, which is a concern that, that somebody brought up, on the one side, it can go into their yards, on the other side, it's the same park strip that's on every, every other road, if we're planning on a five-foot park strip, and it's going to be the same company clearing the driveways that are, um, clearing the road, so, we'll be managing the snow removal. Uh, additionally with the radius, this is, uh, an early concept. The radius, once we're, we're on the preliminary process, um, the radius will meet all, all fire codes. And Aaron will be able to have that saved on, to make sure that his trucks that where, where they need to. Other things, uh, other water concerns that we've had here that don't necessarily have to do with the right-of-way with our irrigation tellwaters. We've worked with the irrigation company, they've contacted us, we have a plan, um, to manage those tellwaters and we're, we're trying to create a development that addresses everybody's concerns and part of that is the lesser right-of-way, which allows for more permeable area for water management, so.
So you have less runoff.
Exactly. Exactly.
The situation you're trying to take care of.
Exactly.
Now, there's a difference between right-of-way and, and road width. And right-of-way width doesn't necessarily tie to impermeable or not. Road width does, but right-of-way does not.
The calculations I used, used a, um, forty-five foot sidewalk and road combination on your, uh, standard road profile, that's a thirty-five foot road with two five-foot sidewalks, and this, this one.
How wide is the road you're planning?
Thirty feet.
You're planning a thirty-foot road with a five-foot sidewalk.
Or, sorry, a twenty-five foot road.
Twenty-five foot road.
With a five-foot park strip and a five-foot sidewalk.
The thirty-five foot right-of-way, right?
Thirty-five foot right-of-way with with twenty-five of that being road, a five-foot park strip, and then a five-foot sidewalk. On the other side of the road, there will be no sidewalk, it will just be yards. I'm including the curb and gutter in the road calculation. So, and this profile, where we even came by this profile was on a similar plan uh, for fifty-five and older development here in Providence City.
Is that a cluster development as well?
It, it was a putt.
What, what, what are we talking about the difference? I know, but what are we talking about the difference between cluster developments and, and a PUD? Why, why, why are you going to a cluster instead of a PUD?
I did the cluster because, um, with the zoning and the less than stellar recession for the zoning, we wanted to make sure we were meeting all of the zoning requirements, so our lots are actually, all meet the zoning re- requirements. We're in a PUD development, you can kind of cut those down. And we're, we're asking for so much less than what a PUD offers, and it seemed like the cluster development is, was a way to ask for less, but still ask for some kind of accommodation.
Would you, would you compare this at all to the property next door, Providence Living Area?
The, the Mountain View Retirement Center
Yeah.
is very similar in that they have, um, sidewalk on one side for the most part, they, they, uh, the right-of-way may actually be the same, but I don't think they have any park strips on theirs. We want to have a park strip.
The sidewalk comes right to the road.
Exactly, it goes sidewalk per road.
Do you want to go sidewalk and park strip?
That's what we want to do, the Mountain View. Yep, the Mountain View one doesn't have those, so we're kind of, we're, we're kind of blending what is in Mountain View and what's in Riverside Village. In that we're having the park strip, we're having the wider sidewalk, but sidewalks on one side similar to other private developments, other private roads within the city.
Um, on the shape of that road out there by the T, why wouldn't it go straight north and skip the T? So that it can be connected into the next subdivision building, just to the north.
Heading straight north is hard wetlands. It's hard wetlands, so heading to the west, that actually allows for, for future connection, we, um, and like I say, eventual.
Yeah.
But we are, the area where that, that ends is undeveloped, is what I should say. Uh, we've adjusted the plan, I have copies if you guys want to see it, but we've adjusted it to where water detention is actually behind lots, uh, fifteen and sixteen, that's the lowest part of the property. So, um, instead of having the water detention down between lots nine and ten, we've kind of pulled the lots this way. We lost a lot doing that, but, um, it, your guys' favorite word, it was way more feasible to put the, the water detention. When I say feasible, I'm talking about gravity, not, not cost. Gravity worked way better to put the, the water detention area back behind.
That condition.
Perfect.
What's lot number thirty-three, so much bigger than the rest of them?
Lot number thirty-three is an oddball, it's going to be outside of, of the fifty-five and older, it's going to be its own own lot that fits in with the, the rest, it exceeds the, um, the single-family high zoning by considerably, like more than double what, what is required there, but we wanted to have the fill of the private road. In, in the fire review, it said if you have lots one and two access one hundred east, then you can do the lots as it's laid out there, there. We want our neighborhood to feel like a neighborhood, so we don't want those lots facing, um, one hundred east, and we don't want it to feel like a flag lot where there's two houses facing the road with this driveway between them, so we wanted it very clear that, that that portion is, is the fifty-five and older, and just because of the layout of things, lot thirty-three uh, ended up just being a standard lot, that is, is not going to be part of the HOA, not going to be, not going to be required to be fifty-five and older, and will be very similar to the lot just next to it.
So you heard the concern, and as I would have as well, for additional parking for your residents. What, tell us what you've thought about that.
In, in our future plan, um, you guys, if I bring a copy up so you can look at what I'm looking at.
If you can share.
There should be six copies there. Um, what you'll notice is, there's a lot more gaps, uh, between lots and lot twenty-six is now non-existent. We would want to, uh, fit the extra parking where, where we can. Um, we would want to, uh, fit the extra parking where, where we can. Um, that, on this map that you guys have up there, lot fourteen, uh, is extra wide. Towards the end of that cul-de-sac, we can add, add additional, we can redesign to add the, the additional parking that's required.
How much additional parking is that? Do you know what's up your head?
Whatever you guys tell me.
Oh.
We, we currently plan on, I'm, I'm not sure what the city ordinance is, but we currently plan on two off-site parking stalls for every lot in addition to in-groch, um, parking. So on every lot, there's currently going to be at least four, if not five or six parking spots. Um, depending on if they go with a two or a three-car garage design, um.
You're saying, you're saying in the driveway, there'll be a place for up to, including the garage, to be placed for four to six cars on the each individual lot.
Correct. That's two cars on the fore end side of that. That's two cars in front of the two-car garage and two cars within the two-car garage. If they were to go with a three-car garage, depending on the, uh, the allowed right of, the allowed access to the road for that three-car entrance, we could most likely fit a third car in front of a third car garage, which would be two more cars. So we're planning on four to six spots, depending on what, uh, the residents request per lot.
So how deep is the driveway to the?
We were planning on twenty feet. Port trucks.
Dodge.
Why? Do you own a Ford? Definitely.
Just a matter-
I own a Dodge and a Chevy.
Just a matter of clarification. Um, one hundred east is a sixty-six foot wide right of way, right? You're not shrinking it at all?
No, one hundred east, we have it drawn to continue the exact right of way that it is, uh, within, um, within Riverside.
It's showing only a fifty foot, so that's why I'm asking.
We pulled ours, ours back in. If it's, if it's drawn on there, I didn't put that fifty foot. That's part of the, the-
Just clarifying that it would be a sixty-six foot at least.
Yes, we're planning on, on the full width for one hundred east.
Sixty-six foot, that's, that includes the sidewalks, though.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and when you talk twenty-five, just, just to clarify that back to the commission. Um, because we, in our standard profiles, we call out a two-point-five foot, so a two-and-a-half foot curb and gutter. So that is twenty feet of, of asphalt width or twenty feet of, of road width as we would classify. So just keep that in mind that that's a twenty foot. Um, I know you said twenty-five. I was just clarifying that, that, that when you included the curb and gutter, you take that out because that's about five, that's five feet. That's what it leaves, just to, just to clarify the point, too.
That's correct. And, uh,
That's enough room for two cars to pass each other.
It's enough room for two cars to pass each other. And where we would be required to put up no, no parking signs on both sides of the road. It calls out how, how many feet, but we would plan on doing that. I, within these developments, street parking is typically not ideal for, um, the fifty-five and older group. They don't love having street parking up there. So I, I'm not sad about requiring parking in, in the driveways.
A parking area of, uh, depends coming to be able to have, go to that parking and have to walk to. You have something like that?
That's what I was thinking there towards the end of the cul-de-sac and over towards the Hammerhead. Addressing, addressing the requested or the required additional parking in those two areas. So that we can have that extra parking.
Start at what standard? What would be standard if we were going to require additional parking?
Well, I don't know what's standard for additional parking, but what's standard is two parking stalls per unit. So they're exceeding the, the minimum standard. Of course, in most single-family homes, you definitely have more than two parking stalls because most of them have a garage and they've got a driveway that's at least twenty feet back because of our front yard minimums and off of a street-side road. So, um, but the, the minimum standard is two, two spaces per single-family unit.
Can I say one more thing? Keep in mind, these are, um, fifty-five and older. This is a fifty-five and older development, which means that these houses, unlike a traditional single-family house, they're not going to have both parents and kids necessarily driving, that all have vehicles. So it's likely that their driveways are going to be much emptier than a traditional single-family development that, uh, maybe has two driving kids and two adults that each have a car.
But isn't that, you know, it doesn't cobblestone, aren't there kids living with people down in Cobblestone? And they have additional cars down there. And I, I see that all the time down Cobblestone.
I'm, I'm not sure on the family size, but I know that their guest parking gets utilized a lot. Because I, I haven't been in there for a couple of years, but, um, when I used to have family that lived in there, it was tricky to find a parking place in there. So.
But there's no, uh, driveway for the most part in Cobblestone, is that right?
Very short driveway.
Yeah.
Not, not up to parking. You gotta go someplace else.
And Cobblestone has a lot of five-building clusters, but with a shared driveway, which is very, very different from what we're planning on doing.
Can I think of this? Besides my family, we would need thirty parking. Literally. I have twenty-seven grand kids.
You invite them over every week?
I guess you can.
You should have seen on our street, there was a missionary or, and departure, departure Sunday, and our, our street is twenty-nine feet wide. And we did not, because go around curves, where a car come off back and forth is impossible because parking was on both sides totally full. We know this occurs very-
And that's why this, unlike the standard profile, which, um, is thirty-five feet wide, the cars can park on both sides, which takes that down to, say it's ninety per car. Um, it takes that down substantially. We wouldn't, we would have no parking and no parking enforcement throughout the, the main road. So that, uh, we can maintain the fire accesses as required by Aaron and the fire department.
So this plan that you gave us, you have, um, two fewer lots. Is that because you think that you're going to have wetland problems in here?
No, it was, the reason we took those two lots off is, is, uh, in Aaron, the fire chief's review of the property, he only wants thirty, the maximum for one entrance is thirty lots. And we could have accommodated that, uh, accomplished that by having, uh, lots one and thirty-two facing one hundred east, but we didn't want to do that. So by taking those other lots, it also allowed for some of the gaps that you guys see, which are going to be walking trails to kind of create a loop that goes along the road and then back by the wetlands for the residents to have. So every resident, even if their backyard isn't facing the wetlands, can still enjoy the wetlands and see, have easy access to those areas. I, I, I walk a lot, just, that's why I assume that everybody wants to as well.
Yes, sidewalk is gonna go, uh, on the north side of private road and also on the side of private road.
So is the sidewalk gonna go along this and around the cul-de-sac?
It will be on the east side of the cul-de-sac, the north side of the private road and the east side of the private road, all the way up and around. Because I'll have to, uh, have that sidewalk going all the way to the Hammerhead.
So lots twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six on this would not. On the west, on the west side of the cul-de-sac.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three has, but it won't have. It won't have it on this side, and these ones won't have.
Correct. We planned on, on doing the sidewalk on the east side of the, the cul-de-sac. Yes, east side.
So if it's on east, yeah, then it looks.
Okay. It's eight twenty-five. And I've been up for a very long time today, so.
Could, could we have Scarlett, could we come up and answer some questions for us? Thank you, Jared.
Thank you guys for your time.
What, what is wrong here? Is there anything wrong here? I mean, I, I, I guess I don't understand cluster developments. So, uh, can you give me a one paragraph on cluster and why we do it this way and why we just? PUD, why we go pushing with PUD and let them come back and be like Ballard Springs?
Um, well, part of it has to do with the amount of, um, a PUD requires thirty-five percent um, open space. And in all honesty, um, trying to pin down the amenities, because a PUD is pretty clear that there should be some amenities in there that, that there's a reason why they're getting some of these perks because of the amenities. That doesn't just mean that it's a big piece of open grass that you use as a retention pond, and that's the amenity and the open space. And so what Jody's trying to do is, he's not, he, his, the wetlands is not twenty-five percent or is not thirty-five percent, so it doesn't meet that thirty-five percent. But one of the, one of the frustrations the developer had on the other one was that the people that wanted to purchase in there didn't really want some of the amenities that, that normally you would think that amenities, you know, if it wasn't an active adult community, there would be different amenities, maybe that would, would be easier to do. So we struggled, in all honesty, with the PUD, trying to meet the PUD requirements with the amenities and things like that, and still meet the needs of that, the people that were going to live in that community. I think with, one of the questions I was gonna ask, and then Jody answered it, because I hadn't seen, I haven't seen the, the little plan that you've got. But, um, making walkways back into utilize the, the wetlands area, I think that, you know, satisfies a lot of amenity type idea in here. The other thing, and maybe you mentioned it when I was out, um, checking a message, but what is, Ben, what is that south, what's that southwest corner?
Doesn't have a number on it. But on this here, you can look at this.
Agreed. It was originally going to be detention area. We've moved the detention area back to behind lot fifteen and sixteen. So it was, it was going to be detention area.
Okay.
Now that's behind fifteen and sixteen. I would also, if possible, like to make a comment on all the reason we went uh, cluster instead of finding unit development.
Anyway, um.
What kind of amenities are in Ballard, is it called Ballard Springs? Yeah, what kind of amenities are there that are required by the PUD?
I don't know for sure yet, that there's supposed to be like a pickleball court or, and then one of the things that they ask is that they be able to do a survey once they sell their lots and come back to us with a better plan. So we really don't have a good plan on those amenities at this point.
It's a percentage of the development.
Yes.
Has to be that.
Right.
And then this cluster doesn't require a percentage to be anything.
So are we talking about a need to rezone, rezon this area, some limits?
No, no. It doesn't need to rezone. It just needs, it, if, if he did a standard subdivision in there, even if he used a private road, if he didn't build a cluster and he didn't do a, um, PUD, even with that wetland ability there for open space, he would still be looking at a sixty-six foot right of way with the minimum of thirty feet of asphalt, the two-and-a-half foot curb and gutter on each side, minimum of seven foot parking strips, minimum of five-foot, uh, sidewalks in sixty-six feet. That means that those park strips, if they, if they stick to the thirty-foot asphalt pad, that means that the, the park strips end up about, I think it's about eleven feet or ten or eleven feet on each side. So, so he would be looking at much more infrastructure within that roadway than what he's proposing if he were to do just a standard, single-family high subdivision. So he's trying to accommodate the wetlands, accommodate, um, whatever you, extra little things you ask, you require of him with conditions and, um, have that reduced roadway width in order to achieve the goal for the active community.
Okay.
And then he, Jody can answer any more than that.
Thank you.
Jody Robbins again. When we first started looking at pod verse, um, or PUD versus cluster, one of the hardest things that we, uh, faced was you're actually penalized on the open space if you go single-family. So I could easily meet the open space requirements of a PUD on this parcel with the same amount of buildings if I connected the buildings. Um, similar to the development meant next to it. We don't want to connect the buildings. We want them to be single-family houses. I think you guys want them to be single-family houses. Um, and, uh, the single-family houses, even though it's an HOA that's taking care of, of the common space, and it's going to feel like open space, technically, every one of those, those lots is six thousand square feet of used space, even though the house isn't anywhere near that. Where if we do a townhouse, each one of those lots is whatever this footprint of the townhouse is. So the cluster development was a way for us to keep what we felt like you guys wanted to, to have there and what the community wants to have there and what we want to have there, but still fall within the city code and not have a penalty for doing the single-family, because that's what we all want there. So.
Well, an, an issue here is the narrowing of the road. And so we just need to say, because the road is that narrow, um, how many more parking stalls do we want him to include in order to make it safe and good for the residents?
Or how wide do you go to, uh, to agree with the width of the road? Keep, keep in, oh, let me just give, give just a few, and then I'll turn it over to you. Um, keep in mind that a traditional, uh, width of a road lane, um, is twelve feet. Now, obviously, a car without, without, uh, without mirrors is usually about seven and a half to eight feet. You add mirrors and you have a little bit spot. Um, but generally, a travel lane is twelve feet. Um, that's kind of the standard. Um, an eight-foot is a parking strip. So if you look, if you want to have two lanes of traffic, An eight-foot is a parking strip. So if you look, if you want to have two lanes of traffic and a parking strip, you have, you, you have your twelve and twelve, so you have your twenty-four, and you're in, and you, you'd have a thirty-two would be a natural. Ours are smaller than that, but thirty-two is the natural fit for two lanes and a park strip.
One park strip.
Correct on one side.
You're saying park strip.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, no, no, no.
Parking area.
Parking for the park, for the, for parking, not park strip. You're correct. Coming from Florida, a park strip is actually where you park and. So. But at that point, so thirty, so thirty-two would be a, a normal one. You take out your curb and gutters and let them park in there, which creates stormwater issues later. But if you do that, you can minimize it down to the thirty. The thirty, there's a reason why thirty is the minimum that the state, the city has. The next reason why we ask for some of those is a lot of times in these kind of developments, and, and hopefully this doesn't, but the developer will develop the, the homeowners purchase these, and then they figure out that they're double taxed, because they have to pay their property tax, which is going to maintain the roads, and they'll come back to the city most likely, maybe not in this one, but most likely, they'll come back and say, hey, the city, why don't you take care of our road? And we'll respond, well, it's not wide enough. You have to widen it to the right width before we'll ever take it. But that conversation does occur at some points. And, and so that, I mean, I understand the, the desire to take and drop the one sidewalk. Not a, not a real big deal, if that's not what they want. You know, having that seven-foot park strip, saying that correctly, saying, in part of the right-of-way is grass. Makes a little difference, right? Because it's gonna be there, whether it's right-of-way or, or not, the grass is still gonna be there. So I think it boils down to how wide is that road? And how wide is the actual asphalt? Because you can have a sixty-six-foot wide right-of-way with a thirty-foot asphalt and sidewalk on one side and still accomplish nearly everything you wanted. Right? And it would, it just, just the exception to the sidewalk and. But keep in mind that narrow road, when we go to a narrow road, there is, there is consequences to it. Generally, equipment, so maintenance-wise, we generally, that doesn't, that width difference, we, we can have a twelve-to-fourteen-foot piece of equipment, so maintenance-wise doesn't really make a difference with the extra footage. But it is that traveling. So what you're doing, if you accept a twenty-foot, you're accepting the narrowest allowed travel lane of you dots, very narrowest. And no parking at twenty feet. You're, you're shrinking it pretty tight. And I understand P U D gets something different. But keep in mind, they've added a lot more open space, and, and they have less lots because, and, and less density because of their open space. So in this, you're having higher density and smaller roads. I'll turn it, I'll turn it to you, and you can comment or whatever.
Yes. One of the things you brought up was the road changing to public. We're going to have to, due to the slope of the land, have private utilities under there. The road in the adjacent fifty-five and older development is also a private road. There's a reason we're not hooking onto it. We asked them, and they said they didn't want to, because it's a private road. So we plan on that road always being private, and the road near it has been private. You mentioned the two lanes, travel lanes of twelve feet each. I would suggest considering the fire right-of-way of twenty feet plus an eight-foot park, parking area on one side. I'm asking for a twenty-five-foot road. If we go up to a twenty-eight-foot road, we can have parking all the way along one side and still meet the twenty-foot fire lane requirement. The, you also mentioned that P U D has less units because of more open space, but the ordinance, the P U D ordinance gives a density bonus. It's just tighter. So you have this more people in there that are just tighter together.
You have smaller, no, you have smaller lots. You're right. You have smaller lots with a higher density, with higher amount and concentration, but you have more open space. So you, you pull them together, but you're required more open space, so there are actually less people in, in a P U D, but they're closer together.
My understanding was there was a
But there is.
Density bonus in the P U D.
Once, yes, together. So there, so you can, you can get them closer together in your development, but you still have to give that open space back another spot. So you're right. You're right, it does, it does have that density. You can bring them closer together, but you still have to have that open space, so.
And we're, it's, the, I guess your question about why we're not just doing a, a P U D is, once again, you're, where we're wanting to do single-family lots, and we're not wanting to put any multifamily in there, where, where not getting the benefit that he's mentioning of, of having more units together to meet a, a similar density, where we're just staying pure with the actual zoning that we have. So we're, that's, that's where we're at. So do you agree that if we added the, if our road profile is including the curb and gutter was twenty-eight feet, that would allow for the eight-foot parking on the one side and still maintain the twenty feet of fire truck?
I don't make the decision, they do. I'm just trying to, but I understood.
We understand what he asked.
Okay.
Your ask guns.
Yes.
Oh. And we're gonna drill the hell out.
I just wanted to make sure that I was then missing some numbers there, because my road profile that I requested is twenty-five feet. If we go up to twenty-eight feet, it's, that's three feet. There's, I can.
You can pull three feet out?
I can pull three feet out, and we can have parking all the way along one side, and we'll still have to put no parking signs on along one side of the road, but.
Still go with the twenty-foot driveways, too.
And we would still have the twenty-foot driveways. We, but we would still be in the same position, asking for a less right-of-way, but instead of a thirty-five-foot right-of-way, we would be asking for a thirty-eight-foot right-of-way. Or my understanding is you guys can make that suggestion, and we can move forward with our, our preliminary plan with a thirty-eight-foot right-of-way with park strip and sidewalk on one side, but not the other side.
That feels better to me than in the fifty-five and older having parking quite a ways away and having people have to walk out, so.
It's a confusing thing to try to be, be aware of the problems, like where I park.
Yeah.
And then you start wandering around and find it, figure it out. So your proposal could be that it's twenty-eight feet plus the park strip and sidewalk. And the, and the city standards are sixty-six. But we're talking about giving up one side sidewalk. So.
The city standard, at least what I did Providence Shire, it had ten-and-a-half-foot park strips on both sides of the road with five-foot sidewalks. So you're twenty-one feet worth of park strip. Ten feet worth of sidewalk, and that leaves thirty-five feet for the road and curb and gutter. I was really impressed with myself for being able to say them the first time without messing it up. You're going to have five feet of sidewalk on each side with ten-and-a-half feet of park strip on each side for a total of thirty-one feet. Since it's sixty-six foot right-of-way, you end up with thirty-five feet left over for the road, which is two, two-and-a-half feet for each curb and gutter and a thirty-five, or thirty feet worth of asphalt. What we're asking for as opposed to what we actually asked for when we got here, with your guys' change, would be thirty, thirty-eight feet total with twenty-eight feet of that being road and curb and gutter, and the remaining ten feet being park strip and sidewalk.
But it gives them one side of the road to park on without having to do stuff like that. I like that better.
Okay, so tell us, Ryan, your understanding, if we were going to pick any random lot up and, or random road up in Fox Ridge, how wide is the asphalt there? Not the curb and gutter, anything. How wide is the asphalt? Is it twenty-four? Plus parking, or what, what would you?
Well, Spring Creek, I know right off, because we paved it, so it's twenty-nine to thirty feet. So we just did Spring Creek Road, so I can tell you. Spring Creek Road, if you drive it, it's twenty-nine to thirty feet of asphalt.
But we're Spring Creek.
And there are no sidewalks.
And there's no sidewalks on either side. So that's kind of the, that standard one is, is the thirty feet. But what I think I would, I would propose back, not propose, uh, yes, thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Yes, thank you. That's good. I appreciate that. So what you would be, but what he's talked about now is similar to your partial street cross-section, which is twenty-four feet of asphalt, two-and-a-half curb and gutter, although that, anyway, and then seven-foot park strip and a five-foot sidewalk. So if you see some of these that we've approved as, as, well, sometimes they've been called half-streets, but partial cross, partial street cross-section, that would be similar. Keep in mind, if you had the twenty-foot and, and the fires there, nobody's getting out. So these fifty-five and older fires there, there, there's no other side of the street to come out, which I understand. But, but maybe the consideration, if you're considering others, is, is, we do have a partial street that, that is kind of applicable. It does require that, we would require it normally, the sixty-six, but when they're developing one side, that's why we use this. But that's the next minimum we, we kind of default back to, that we say, hey, this is, is safe enough until it's fully developed. But, but that does put twenty-seven and a half in your, well, that, it puts twenty-nine in road, because there is, you have both sides of curb and gutter. So anyway, it's a little bit more, but just, just kind of throwing out your other, other cross-sections that you currently use in the town, just kind of as information.
For instance, one hundred, one hundred east is, how much asphalt? Thirty-eight feet?
I'd have to pull that up.
If it's a sixty-six-foot right-of-way.
Yeah, sixty-six-foot right-of-way. If it is a regular road, resident, regular residential road, we're usually thirty, thirty feet of asphalt, and if it's a collector road, then we're usually thirty-seven. Some of our streets don't meet that, but that's kind of what. So that, that's the street cross-sections that are standard for the city. Yeah.
But, Brian, you can't use those when you're looking at the older developments, because these cross-sections with this narrower asphalt have only been around for about five years. Up in the Fox Ridge area, we did have some that the asphalt could be as narrow as twenty-nine, but there's some that the asphalt had to be as wide as thirty-nine. So there's kind of a.
That's why we're here, is because there's some wiggle room here.
Well, in, back in the, back in the day, when we required wider, wider road, or wider asphalt, we required the same sixty-six foot. But we required wider asphalt. We, we didn't require as much park strip, and we required thirty-nine feet of asphalt. But we do have some roads that we had a standard where there was twenty-nine feet of asphalt, and another standard where there was thirty-five feet of asphalt. So when you go into the, some of these older developments that fell within all of those standards, you'll see anywhere from twenty-nine feet of asphalt to thirty-nine feet of asphalt in some of them. So that's why it's hard for, for Ryan to be able to say, oh, that road is this, is because depending on when those roads were built, there was a different standard in place.
Change, or it's generally narrower.
Now it's general, now it is narrower, yes.
I get a notice every year that only plow center twenty-four feet of the road. Is that correct?
Is that for the county road? Are you on a county road?
I've been, I've been noticed or noticed it in the Providence newsletter that they only plow the center twenty-four feet.
The first couple of passes, they make sure that they've got at least twenty-four feet plowed. And if it's a big storm, that they've gotta stay up on top of, and they can't go curb to curb. But once the storm eases up and they can go curb to curb, we get in there and move those ricks out as far as we can, so that we've got plenty of room for, we hope, again, a normal winter. But, but the first pass through, they're aiming for twenty-four.
So the bottom profile, what do you call that, Ryan? What's the name of it?
Partial street cross-section.
And without me having to use my brain to add all, all the distances, what's the?
Twenty, or three and a half, and that's curb and gutter only on one side. But, well, if you just added the other two-and-a-half for the curb and gutter on the other side, then at that point, you're, you one.
Sorry. Forget I asked that question.
That one, forty-one, sorry, yeah.
That one also has a seven-foot minimum park strip. It looks like, which we're asking for five-foot park strip, which around quite a bit.
I don't disagree. This is just what we have.
Yeah, yes.
Well, it's all over the place, you know, some of the grass strips next to the road are, you know, should be in some cases. And, and none is existing in other cases. Okay, so. I will entertain a motion.
How are we gonna get the big, wider, wider road in there?
Well, we're gonna ask him to modify it. To include that.
Keep in mind, he doesn't have an official concept approval. So he's going to design what you, what, what conditions you set. So, so that's, that's what you need to think about is what kind of conditions you wanna set, and then Jody will, will design to that.
Make a motion that we approve the concept plan analysis for Providence Springs fifty-five-plus community to include the.
I'm sorry, Bob, you're not approving the concept. You're approving a special review.
Make a motion that we approve a special review for Providence Springs fifty-five-plus to include the findings of fact, conditions of law, and the conditions along with a suggestion of a twenty-eight-foot road.
Asphalt.
Asphalt.
It's a five, it's a five-foot parking strip and a five-foot sidewalk.
Yes, the one gray area is one of that twenty-eight feet that you mentioned is including the curb and gutters on both sides, because that's five feet on combined the curb and gutter is. Typically, the, the curb and gutter.
Are part of the street.
Are part of the street and considered part of, of the navigable areas for fire.
That'll pop up later on, won't it? Or do we have to get that in the motion now? Have to get that in motion now to include the five-and-a-half foot curb and gutter?
Five-foot curb. Five-foot curb and gutter.
Do we include?
Do we include that in the twenty-eight feet of roadway, or is that in addition?
In addition. Uh, that, let me rephrase that to, uh, I think the twenty-eight foot would include the five-foot curb and gutter. On both sides.
Two and a half feet curb and gutter on both sides, five foot total.
I think it agrees as it take to make a motion tonight, a lot. Okay.
Yes, I do.
I'll make a motion. I'll second the motion.
Okay. So we have a motion by Bob Perry, second by Brian Marmel. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Jody, the, what's the width of the neighborhood, or the neighbor next door, what? Neighborhood next door, what's the width of the street there, did you agree that about?
I believe it's thirty with a four-foot sidewalk right next to it, or a total of thirty-five. So our right-of-way will be larger than theirs by, um, by three feet, but we'll also have a park strip. Thank you guys very much.
We've got, um, one, two, three, four in the base. Only, Joe has didn't vote.
No, I said name.
Oh, he's,
You didn't answer the name.
I didn't give you a chance.
Yeah, my vote is name.
Okay. So,
I would go wider. Yeah. I'm in the minority.
Okay. Next item, number four, preliminary plot approval for Singleton subdivision. So we're considering a request by Marcus Singleton for approval of preliminary plat for the Singleton subdivision of four lot residential subdivision located in the general area of eight-ten South, three-hundred East. So, um, do we have Marcus here? So patient. Okay, we're going to have Scarlett give us a an opening. Go through this really quickly. They are proposing four lots. One of them is, is quite large, so the overall net density is only one-point-two-three units per acre, so they're well, um, below the, the maximum density that you can have, and this is all their single-family traditional. They're not making any improvements to the east side, because that's fourth east, and, and it's developed to the point that, that our current standard has it be developed to, but they will be making, um, additional improvements a little bit to, uh, thirties. They will, um, extend the asphalt a bit, um, and, um, put the curb gutter sidewalk and park strip in on the east side of thirties. Um, there is bike lane. Thirties is one of the ones that's slated for a bike lane, but I'm not sure if that's included in our bike lane project. Did we, that included in our bike lane project? If it's not, then they will be striping a bike lane as well.
I don't think it is, because our, our, our bike lane is three east and west, and then Garden Drive. And so where this is north and south, I don't, I think there are only north and south is Garden Drive.
Okay, all right. Um, as far as the review of the preliminary plat on the zoning and the actual, all of the requirements now, this doesn't get into the fact, any of the construction stuff, that, that pipe sizes and everything, they haven't got that far, but as far as the preliminary plat goes, they've met the requirements there. The, um, irrigation companies, actually, the only one company is involved in this, and they have been very involved, there's a letter included in your, um, packet from Spring Creek Water Company. Um, there is a, excuse me, an irrigation ditch that does go through the property on a diagonal. The ditch is going to remain, but the irrigation company is, is okay with the plans to, um, the way that's going to be improved, so they're, they've bought off on that. Um, there are some conditions, um, the striped bike lane is one of them, and that's coming out of our, not out of our transportation plan, well, our transportation plan does mimic it, but it comes out of the parks, trails, and recreation plan, is where it's showing that bike lane. Then, when it talks about, um, the condition number two, they will do that, but they will do that when the, um, houses come in, because until we know the size, the actual overall square footage, and this is for fire-water flow, is not just the footprint square footage. This is the overall square footage. If it's covered deck, it's part of the house for fire flow purposes. And so we can't, they can't, uh, they will meet it when it comes time, but they can't give you numbers on that at this point in time. They do know that they, um, will have a water dedication requirement, they're planning on that. Um, so they have, they have met their conditions, and will continue to meet the conditions as the process goes forward. Question, comment? Marcus?
I don't have any comments unless you have questions.
Okay.
Please, we have questions.
Marcus Singleton?
Marcus? You related to Tom?
No, we always get asked that question. Yep, yep, we are very close.
Okay. So you want to take a parcel, you want to divide it up into four parcels, you want to do subdivision, and you want single-family, uh, traditional? Is that what it is? My last name?
Yes.
Single-family traditional. And so, you don't want anything special, you're just going to do it? Irrigation company says it's fine, they gave you some stipulations, you're having a problem with that?
Uh, no, we don't have any problems with the stipulations.
Okay. Okay. There's something else I wanted to ask you. Nothing special about what you want to go in, you don't want to put fifty-five plus in, you don't want to make them extra big, you just want to divide it up, improve the street, sell the lots, and everybody move on?
We want to take one of lots for our own and sell it.
Okay, I'm glad you came up, I'm glad you answered questions for me. So you're buying into your own place, you're eating your own dog food?
Well, it's my parents' land, um, so yes and no, they are giving it to us at a discounted rate.
Yeah, but you're eating your own dog food, you're dividing this up, you can live on one of them.
Yep, yep.
Unsatisfied.
Okay.
Raise the motion. Oh. Where's the fourth lot?
So the fourth lot is, is that upper one, the big one, uh, that would be the fourth lot that we're dividing off of. It would be east.
So we've got lot one, two, and three.
There are four lots.
And the fourth one?
The fourth one is east of those.
Where the house is.
Where the house is. So we'll be dividing off of that.
Okay, it's the large one.
The large one.
That's your house?
That's my parents' house.
Your parents?
Yes.
Right. The other comment?
Before the, before the motion, man, I just need to clarify a point of interest before, depending on what we're doing there. And so I'm going to abstain.
Tyler gets to go, no, Tyler, she wasn't.
No.
He'll cook.
Okay. Four minutes after nine, are you going to make one?
I will. I propose that we, uh, I'm requesting that we accept a preliminary plat analysis for plat number two, one fifteen and thirty-six, as proposed, to, to divide this into four lots. Single-family traditional, and that we, um, accept the findings of fact and the conclusions of law. And, and as long as you're willing to follow the conditions, or no, and, and we also also propose that the conditions be met as well. Didn't sound right.
That's right.
Is it right?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion by Brian Marmel, second by Roland Cecil. All in favor?
Aye.
Joe abstaining. Um, okay, uh, number five.
It's good.
Did we do our?
Motion passes.
Oh, motion passes.
Okay.
One more step on the game.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I told you, I'm fading fast.
Do we need to?
Do we need a motion to continue after nine? I'd have to look at your bylaws, I don't remember.
No, I, I'm concerned about the people that are here. You've got another, an item on the agenda that we haven't addressed yet? Okay.
Really, I did just read all the bylaws.
Couldn't, couldn't we keep going until we get these two done?
Yes.
We have to do a vote according to the bylaws.
Okay.
Tyler, what do we have to do?
At nine o'clock, you call for a, a vote to continue the motion.
We need a motion to continue after nine.
I'll make a motion that we continue right to nine, I'll second it.
Okay, motion by Bob Perry, second by Joe Chambers. Uh, to continue after nine, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, so, I'm, number five. We have, uh, a request by Brian Bishop to amend the plat regarding lots sixteen and seventeen of Eagleview Estates. No, no, no. Nope, this is another one. Um, subdivision phase one, located in the area of seven fifty-two and seven sixty-two Eagle Drive, Providence, Utah, petition request to combine lots sixteen and seventeen. So, so these are existing lots, um, and I, I don't know if that's my laptop or what, but it's not letting me pull up the exhibit. Um, oh, okay, all right, well, um, I guess nine o'clock is the witching hour. So, shutting down. Ryan, would you mind going on the parcels zoning viewer to this area, and we can explain to them what's going on there? What's happened is, the bishops own two lots, they own sixteen and seventeen. Their home is on seventeen, sixteen is still vacant, and they would like to, um, have a detached garage, I think, an accessory building of some si- size. They cannot, um, the way our ordinance reads, you have to have a main structure on the lot to be able to do an accessory structure, or else the accessory structure has to meet the guidelines of a main structure. And one of the guidelines in a residential area is that it be a residential structure, be the main structure. So a detached garage or would not work for what they want to do. So in order to accomplish their goal, they would like to combine their lots. Their lots ha- also have a public utility easement. Now, the state code changed, I think it changed in twenty-twenty, and started calling things municipal utility easement, but in the, in the definition, it says that a municipal utility easement is not a protected public utility easement or a public utility easement. And these were definitely recorded as public utility easements. So there's a little bit of a different process to vacate a municipal utility easement than there is now to vacate the public utilities, and I talked with our city attorney, and, um, the utilities have to buy off on this, they will sign the plat. They've been noticed, um, the applicants had blue, had them, through the blue-stake system, had them come out. They know there's no utilities existing, there are no utilities within the existing easement. I've already received the, um, the, uh, signed documentation from Dominion that they're fine to give up the, um, utility easement, so Dominion is, is definitely on board. The others have been notified, but if, if, and if they don't get back to me, they will have to sign amended final plat, so they are definitely on notification. So we're treating it more like a, um, removal of a plat restriction in a way, rather than an actual, uh, going through the public hearing process to vacate a right-of-way or a municipal utility easement. So that's, that's one thing that's a little bit different with this go-around. But that's why, and the reason why, um, they need to vacate that, is because if they don't, and they want to put their building in, across that easement area, we can't let them do that, because we can't let them put a structure like that over the top of a utility easement. So that's, and unless they're combined, the utility companies will not abandon them. Well, I don't know about that, but unless they're combined, they would have to put their accessory building on lot seventeen, which has their house on it, and they'd like to be able to utilize, I don't know where I just went now.
So, I'll, I'll add to that one. So if they don't combine, there is no primary, um, so that you can't have, if you don't have a primary structure, you can't have an accessory structure, so if they want to put it on that lot, they've got it combined, because it's an accessory structure.
And they have met the requirements to this point. Okay. So, Mr. Bishop, you want to comment?
I have no comment unless you have a question.
Okay. Okay.
We approve the combination of lots sixteen and seventeen, subject to the conditions, findings, and conclusions, so forth in the report.
I'll second that.
Motion by Judge.
Uh, just, just as one added condition that I, I'd like to point out, if you'll notice, that because a lot didn't have a primary structure, it doesn't have a sidewalk on the front, I don't know if that's still the case, I assume it is. So I think that because there won't now be a primary structure, which would have been the trigger to put in the sidewalk, that, that they still put in the sidewalk. I don't know whether that can be added to the motion or not, but.
If you just tell us with that shake of the head, you intend to put in sidewalk?
Just this, otherwise you're going to have to come up and do it.
Okay, so, motion. Okay, Joe Chambers made, has made a motion and amended that.
I still second it with amendment.
Brian Marmel is on a roll tonight. Um, okay, any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you're home free. Um, item number six.
We, we go down to item number nine? That's the one that gentleman's here for.
Okay.
Sorry, I don't know your name.
Asia? Okay. Would you like?
All of you.
Okay, this is a, uh, it's on change request, and it's coming to you so they can introduce this. It will have to go to a public hearing, um, we will advertise for that and schedule that for your next meeting, depending on the outcome of your discussions, uh, whether it's the next one or maybe the one after that. But what they're here to do really is just to introduce. My links are not working on this one either.
Oldprovincietown.com is down.
Well, that's no good.
Great, you will?
Yeah.
Mine pulled up just fine.
Okay, anyway. So, what they are asking for. Uh, is. And that, in a way, it's gonna end up being kind of inter-block when, when it comes back to you. They're asking, they have a lot that is an acre. And it started out that they had wetlands, almost. Three quarters of their lot, I think, about was designated wetland. As development came and farming left and irrigation down in that area left, apparently the wetlands dried up. So they got approval from the Corps of Engineers, um, to call that dry land. And so now there's no longer a wetland requirement on this particular property. What they would like to do is look at multifamily medium and put a small town home development. In there that would come off of 200 North. Right now, 200 North. Is where that is inside the arrow. 200 North comes, 200 North comes down and then makes a. A right-hand turn to the north. Uh, 200 North would go right into this development. If, if you so choose, and I will let them explain the rest of it. But you're not deciding on whether to rezone tonight or not.
This is the introduction of a concept.
Introduction of why they think they. Multifamily medium works in that area. And then it would go to a public hearing. Tyler would post it, mail the notices, all of that good stuff.
So no action needed tonight?
Right, no action needed other than get there. Okay. Actually, I interrupt one sec. There is one gentleman in it. I don't know what you want to do, but.
He's online.
I don't think he's online yet. But if we're not going to do these, if you're thinking of maybe not doing these study items, these other three study items. I'd like to just text him and tell him it'll be on the next agenda, rather than have him kind of keep waiting for me to say come on. So I just want to know if you intend to talk about eight or not. I think because of how late it is, we could take out these other two and then just add that one to the next agenda. I will text him and tell him that.
I believe he is on.
Oh, he is?
He is.
Oh.
He's been on for a while.
Okay.
Esha Perry, I'm actually just going to introduce Tyson Glover to you. He's with Civil Service, uh, Civil Solutions, excuse me. We've chosen to bring him here tonight because we really have a sincere desire to do this really well, this development. And so he's like our expert, you know, that's with us. So I'm gonna go ahead and turn just a minute to him. And then if you have some specific questions for us, we're happy to answer them. But again, he's our, he's our expert.
Okay. And again, this is a concept that we need to think about. It's a precedent. Um, so we're just, this is just the introduction of the concept.
Good evening. Okay, so this, uh, it's an existing subdivision. Oh, excuse me, Tyson Glover. So an existing subdivision, um, as you meant the Perrys, they have a desire to subdivide the rear. Um, and rezone. Uh, part of this process, following the general plan initiative number six. Is that there's various housing opportunities. Um, initiative number six encourages housing options to meet the needs of residents of all ages. Income level and family size regardless of their stage of life. Um, so to continue with the city's, uh, general plan and initiative to provide this. They're requesting to rezone to multifamily.
This is a, you want it subdivided? The concept is to subdivide it and take one of the parcels and convert it to multifamily. Yeah, but we'll talk about media.
Okay, so. Doing this, go ahead.
Well, and I, I meant to invite all of you before tonight to my property. And so I would like to extend that invitation to you at any time. In fact, you can drive there, drive in, say hello. I might be washing dishes in the window. I would encourage you to drive by and just take a look. Uh, it's easy to get to, easy to find. The difference, I feel like, between this and like maybe an, you know, block development like we heard discussed tonight. Is that there is access right off of the main road, um, to this development. It's not like a, it's not a flag lot at all. It's off of a main road.
Can I ask your question? Maybe I'm not seeing it, but what's the deal with the, the Jepson parcel?
Oh, I'm, thank you for bringing that up. So. A neighbor of ours, the Jepsons, they own an adjacent previously wetland, you know, parcel. That's, that they access through just a gate kitty corner to their yard. And they just use it as extra space to go and have some quiet time. So they're not part of this development, but what's kind of cool about that space is that it will continue to be open space. Even though it's not part of the amount of land we're talking about developing. The other thing I want to point out about this project is the precedence of Hidden Creek, um, townhomes that's just around the corner from this. Um, Hidden Creek is, uh, like a townhome development that's done a really, really nice job. I mean, I, we live in this neighborhood. We've lived in this neighborhood for 15 years. So we really do want to do something here that's gonna benefit the back, the neighborhood. Um, and we're interested in input, you know, and again, that's why we're hiring professionals because this is our first time doing a development. Um, but we feel like that Hidden Creek is a good precedent for this kind of thing. And there's actually multi-zones within our neighborhood as well.
So the access, tell us about the access. You've taken the back half of your lot or the east side of your lot?
Right.
And enough to put in some, some housing.
Right.
Uh, and the access is on 200 North, is that correct?
Yes, yep.
Okay, we got a picture here.
Yeah, the colored.
Okay, so it's at the end of that. Okay, so 200 North ends right there. I can't seem to think of it.
Yeah, I mean, we're literally just three blocks or four blocks this direction down here, yeah.
So the access is really nice.
Yeah, it's.
And, and the closest multifamily dwellings are to the, right there on the left. Um, that, there it is. That's.
That's not Hidden Creek.
No.
Yeah.
So you said you have spoken with the neighbors?
We have talked to the Jepsons before. They knew we were getting the delineation to, to bring it out of wetlands. Um. We, we haven't. I mean, we still need to talk to all of the neighbors, I guess, about this idea. We just want to come, come here and get the ball rolling.
So on the, on the picture there, Ryan, is that purple line, is that first north?
100 west. It's the county road. That's why it's a purple line is county road.
So we're not looking at north at the top?
Yeah, north is the top, but it's, it's a north-south road. What, so it's 100 west going north and south.
I'm talking about the purple line going north and south. Is it going north and south, right?
It's going north and south. It's first west.
From the top of the map.
So here's Orange Park. The county road comes and jogs around and the lot's right here. Very well, these are over here.
So, second north would go right into that property, yeah. So also in terms of neighbor impact, because it's coming off of second north, you're really impacting two neighbors, maybe? Because, you know, you don't have to go through the neighborhood to get to this spot.
And they're only, they're, they're asking to rezone a portion of their lot. So the front portion where their home is, they would retain the minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet, I believe, is the way it's drawn. And then the back portion is the part that they're asking. So it'd be about. Um, there, it'd be about, um, 35,000 square feet is what they would be asking to rezone to multifamily medium.
And are these rental or are they gonna have their individual lot be individually?
Um, parcel and taxed, yeah, tax ID, yeah.
So is it gonna be twin homes? Is that what you're doing?
Um, we looked at the twin home option, um, but no, we're looking for townhomes. Yeah.
You think, how many could you fit on?
I think we could fit nine.
Two units, one four-unit and one, or two buildings, one four-unit building and one five-unit building. So, so two, two buildings.
But again, we're really willing to see lots of input. I absolutely, as I sell real estate, I think about things 10 years down the road. Where you go into a development, there's no parking. No one thought about any of that. So we're very interested in input that way, you know? Nine is the maximum, but we're willing to talk about whatever within, within that zone.
Okay, well.
You're not gonna live in one of them?
No.
Okay.
No, but I would love to hold on to some of them and have my kids live in them someday. I would also love to offer them to the neighbors and let their kids buy one. I think it would benefit the neighborhood. I, there's lots of people in that neighborhood who want their kids to live close.
But here's a, a situation where someone is taking their lot, like your neighbor, that wanted to divide it into four. And sell part of it. So it's a precedent we're talking about.
It's got nice access to it.
It does have. It's not a flag lot, but again. They're, they're zoning part of, rezoning part of their lot. So that they can sell it. Any other discussion anybody wants to have? Questions you want to ask? We're not taking any action tonight. We're introducing this and saying we want you to think about it and we'll come back to it. Uh, next planning.
Did you say you, you talked to neighbors or you haven't talked to neighbors yet?
No, we haven't. Just to the Jepsons, we've had this discussion.
Is that the other empty lot that's right there?
Yes.
To the west?
To the west, yes, yeah.
Do you have a sense of our, the homes around you? Are they owner occupied or are they rented out? And see that there's like a twin homes investment LLC to the west of you?
Right.
That you just have a general sense of?
Well, um, like our cul-de-sac, I mean, this type of neighborhood, um, turns over about every three to eight years. Most homes in that neighborhood are gonna turn over every three to eight years. Is my, I mean, I've lived there 15, so that's just what I've noticed.
How come you stayed for 15?
Probably, um, we used to teach, coach soccer back in that soccer field, so we have actually loved that. But we are busting out of the home in the front is what's happening. So we, we can't stay in that home anymore. We thought about building onto that home, but we decided that probably wasn't the right way for us to go. So we, we've got to get out of that home. It's just not big enough for us anymore. So. Um, yeah, so we plan to probably, you know, move and just use the, the front, either sell it or use it as a rental or something. Yeah. Sorry, what was the original question? I don't know if I'm getting to the, oh, oh, if they're owner occupied or rentals. So, um, again, the impact to neighbors really is neighbors along, what, 200 North? That's the, the major impact to neighbors because I would assume that's gonna be the in, entry and exit point of that, this new development. But around the corner, I would say, um, probably. It's maybe a 60/40, maybe 70/30, maybe even. Actually, there's quite a few owner occupied on, on my backyard side. It's, I, I feel like this neighborhood, um, is very, is very nice. People haven't, haven't invested in it. But it's also lends itself to this type, type of housing. You've got twin homes in this neighborhood. You've got the Hidden Creek townhome development, development in this neighborhood. Three blocks away, you've got a PUD cottage court, uh, development in this neighborhood. So it's just kind of this multifamily options, I feel like, that lends itself well here.
So you're talking about doing two-story?
Uh, yeah, it would be a two-story, yeah. Um, and I'd love you to come see the land because it actually dips down. Um, and so I don't know that those two-story are gonna be, they're probably not gonna be any taller than a house. And I don't know, I don't know if I would defer that to you, Tyson, with two-story, how tall they would be compared to other homes in the neighborhood. But you'll see if you drive through and you just peek into my backyard, it actually dips down, the land does, probably 40.
So has the engineering been done? Geotechnical?
No, it has not as part of the concept plan. This, we'd like to get the rezon, Tyson Glover. Um, and I'll just add to, uh, what has been said. Uh, another unique factor with this parcel is, um, there's already some mature vegetation there and paltrees. So the screening, things like that, that you can look at. Um, it's, my idea, there've been a lot of developments and I was pretty optimistic about this.
Being able to keep torches. A lot of times it will come in and raise them.
Yes, so that would obviously be one, you know, the appeal of it is you can move in and, and already have that landscaping there. There's also some, um, for the city, there's some right-of-way improvements that can be done, um, on the intersection of 150 West and 200 North. Um, there's also the appeal of, you'll have nine taxable lots, um, with, you know, minimal frontage required. Uh, the infrastructure's already in place with sewer and water. Our, our concept plan moving forward after rezon with the city requirements.
How big is, how big does the lot end up being after you? Take your, how big is the lot you want to rezone?
I will.
The piece that you'll end up with is how big?
The remainder piece for the, for the single family or for the multifamily?
Right, three acres?
Um, 35,000 feet is the final division to put into multifamily medium. So that's three quarters of an acre.
Correct.
Eight tent something like.
Plus or minus?
Okay.
Well, well, once we move the preliminary plat and we get the survey back, then we can lay it out with the final numbers.
Okay. All right.
I'm in German. Move the radio, move this. Before this, uh, next meeting, after we head there. Open now. Public hearing. I get the right page. I'm moving.
Yeah, this was just, there was really no action we needed to take on this. It was just merely an introduction of.
I think you need to show us how nine are gonna fit in there. And, cause we're, we're gonna be looking, I'm gonna be looking at the place, places just around the corner and see how that fits on there. Because they've done a pretty good job of it. Uh, but I'm thinking in my mind right now, nine may be too many. I mean, just a question.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for coming and being so patient with all of our back and forth. You're on fire, Jim. You want to close the meeting? We've got two that we can.
Dave Beckham is still on, so he's still there.
Okay.
If you want.
Let's, let's see what he's about to say. Cause it's been on, we've had it on, this is the third time we've had it on the agenda.
This is item number.
Item number eight. Oh, Mr. Beckham?
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
Okay, awesome. Sorry, uh, I've been on, uh, the agenda too many times and been out of town. And once again, I'm out of town.
Last week's cancel meeting, I was in Denmark and I was on the phone with Mike till 5:30. So I get it.
Yeah, so I, uh, sent in a request, uh, to change one of the, the zoning provisions for setbacks. Uh, do you want me to just jump into it?
Definitely.
Okay, let me pull it up. Okay, let me pull it up. So, uh, one of the things that uh I, I've been having a challenge with uh from the beginning, uh, and this is starting in twenty eighteen, I was planning on putting up a, an outbuilding. Uh, and uh they were uh massaging the regulations for accessory dwelling units. And at the time, they were at like thirty feet and they indicated that they were gonna go to fifteen feet potentially. Uh, and uh ultimately, the, the regulation, no, actually, they were, said they were gonna go to ten and ultimately, the regulation went to fifteen. Uh, and so I uh built the building, I, I got tired of waiting for things to, to be finalized. Uh, and.
Or, or an accessory room?
Uh, for an accessory building.
Okay.
And it would be the rear setback is the, the area of concern and area that I wanted to address. So I have a, a, a house on a half acre, so a single-family large. Uh, and so I, I got a zoning approval to go ahead and put that in. And I could have put it at five feet away from the back property line. Uh, and uh I ended up going a little bit beyond the ten that was originally proposed. Uh, and I, I know there's a, a desire within Providence to uh have uh these accessory dwelling units to drive the cost of housing down, I, I understand the complete reasoning of it and agree with it. Uh, given the fact that housing is getting to be uh too high. And i- it's a, a great way to add additional living space uh for people. And then when I, I went through the, the city codes, uh apparently for like multifamily housing, uh, that setback for the rear uh of those buildings is ten. Uh, and then I'm seeing like some inconsistencies there. Uh, and I, I know there's a provision in the uh rear uh setback requirements that say existing structures that do not meet setback requirements may be approved on a conditional basis. And I'm wondering if that's a, where I have to request a variance and then it costs me a thousand dollars to request the variance. Uh, so that's correct question number one for me, uh, because that really defeats the purpose of trying to put an accessory dwelling unit in. Uh, where you have to spend another thousand dollars uh for limited value at it. Uh, so what I, I went through the, all of the regulations and tried to document that. And I wanted to uh request that uh you all uh look at uh changing that requirement for uh single-family large or even larger uh properties, uh because obviously, if I'm surrounded by those type of properties, the, the homes are not right back up next to the property line for that rear setback. Uh, and that would uh increase the uh possibility of others in the community uh putting in accessory dwelling units. Uh, does that make sense?
Well, what I'm gonna do is have Scarlett bring us up to speed on this, um, so, hang on. So the way the code reads right now, um, a detached accessory dwelling unit needs to follow the same setbacks as the current primary structure. And, well, actually, it can't be in front of the primary structure, so that front yard setback, um, it has to be behind the primary structure, so the front yard setback doesn't really apply to it. There has to be fifteen feet of distance between, uh, if I remember right, I'll look it up. Between the primary structure and primary structure and the detached accessory dwelling unit. Now, what Mr. Beckham is saying is that there's an inconsistency. The other thing, uh detached accessory unit can only be um twelve hundred square feet. We do not have a limitation on the square footage of a accessory building. Those can be thirty-five feet high and they can be three thousand square feet if they've got room in their yard. So that it doesn't take up more than twenty-five percent of their yard, all of their detached buildings. So there's, there's not a limit on, on the detached um accessory buildings. And right now, the way the code reads, a detached accessory building, the front yard setback is thirty feet. Um, the side yard interior is five feet, side yard on a street is twenty feet. And the rear yard is five feet, and those are on detached accessory buildings. Um, compared to a principal use, which would be um the same thing that the uh accessory dwelling unit needs to live up to. The front yard has, the front yard on a principal use is twenty, the um accessory dwelling unit has to be behind the principal use. So it's got more than twenty vitals. The side yard interior is ten, the side yard on a street is twenty, and the rear yard is fifteen, so. So what Mr. Beckham is saying is, he feels like there's some disparity between what you can do with a twelve hundred foot accessory dwelling unit versus a much larger accessory building. So that's, that's, I mean, Dave, does that explain what you've been, does that summarize what you've been saying? I apologize. I skipped.
You're correct, exactly correct, and so really, the issue I have is not necessarily on the sides or the front. But for that accessory dwelling unit, uh, I could have just put the building up at five feet and then put an accessory dwelling unit in it later, which uh I'd rather be nicer to the neighbors and uh ultimately, what I did is I put the building in beyond the ten feet. Uh, spacing between me and the neighbors, uh, and so I'd like to have the, the code changed, so it's like ten for a building, maybe, or five or whatever, uh, something. So I don't necessarily have to go apply for a variance in order to put in an accessory dwelling unit.
Asking us to do is to change that so that they're consistent.
Correct.
So Scarlett, is there an ish, is there a problem here uh with his existing setup? I mean, is he gonna, gonna permit, is he gonna be able to get this set up as an ADU or not?
With his existing setbacks, um, hold on, I'll hurry and go to the.
He's got a garage, he's built.
Yes, and it's, it doesn't meet the fifteen-foot rear yard, correct?
Correct, I'm, I range from twelve to fourteen feet.
Are you trying to put an accessory dwelling unit in like the top of it?
Uh, in one side of it.
One side of it.
Yeah, and that would be about eight hundred square feet.
Eight hundred square feet. So would we not allow that? Because he doesn't have. Well, what it says is, new ADUs are subject to the same ordinances that apply to the principal dwelling unit as far as zoning and setbacks. Existing structures that do not meet the setback requirements may be approved on a conditional basis. Adjacent property owners will be notified and a public hearing will be held before the Administrative Land Use Authority, which the Administrative Land Use Authority is myself, Rob Stapley, the Public Works Director, and um Max Pierce, the city engineer, so we would hold the, the public hearing. And then we would either approve or deny the conditional use, so, um. Yeah.
Prior existence.
Yeah, that, this ordinance was adopted on February twelfth, two thousand nineteen. And, and it says news ADUs are subject to the same ordinances that apply. So I would think that this would be talking about a accessory building that was built prior to two thousand nineteen. Cause it would have been existing at the time. We did have one person that actually did take advantage of that, but um they actually had, they, they would have been able to do it even if the, if they'd had to have the primary setbacks, because their detached building actually meets the primary setbacks. They were ten feet off the side and then back then, they had to be twenty feet off of the rear and, and they have a big lot. But, but they were able to do it, they're the only one that I know of that's been able to take an existing detached building and make it work, but they, they were able to do it. But that, but yes, so it, it wouldn't be a variance that, that they would come in for if it's somebody that's got an existing building that, that probably existed before two thousand nineteen, it would be a conditional use that they would come. And we would have to go through a process.
So is this, was the building finished before two thousand nineteen?
I ju- I just finished it this year.
Oh.
Uh, it was started in twenty eighteen.
So if somebody built a big oversized three-car garage that was detached and then said, hmm, this is kind of nice, I need a place for my kids to live, I'm gonna turn it into living quarters. And it's more than twelve hundred square feet, could they do that? The way our city attorneys interpreted it, as long as they did not exceed twelve hundred square feet of that existing detached building, they could do that. Okay, and if, but if it does, they can only use twelve hundred square feet of the whole building? Yeah, the, the, they can only use twelve hundred square, square feet of the building for the living quarters. The rest of it would have to be considered garage or whatever it is.
Part of that question, he says he started building this twenty eighteen, the, that, where he's uh, doesn't have to follow this?
I know, we would have to, I'd have to have the attorney look at that, I, when it comes down to those kind of legal splitting hairs, I don't.
Because he would have.
Even guess.
He would have, except the thing there, had it started, they'd just take two years to get it.
Well, I, I think he's, um, are you doing this, um, because you want us to change, you think that we should change the code? Or you're doing it so that you can take advantage of it and ask for a variance?
Well, I would like to have you change the code, uh, and then I still have to go through the process of getting approved as an accessory dwelling unit. Uh, because right now, it's just a building with an office in it. As far as a garage. Cause that, uh, whenever I hear variance and I hear a thousand dollar uh uh processing for, for, that's like, oh my gosh, that's, that's like a hard pill to swallow, to tell you the truth.
You don't have to do a lot of work.
The thousand dollars was based on the cost of what it takes to do that.
Yeah.
So it's just reimbursement of cost.
Right.
Basically.
Okay.
The one thing I want, I want you to keep in mind, if you move forward with code amendment, then, then it's not just in this one particular case.
Right.
Then that means that, that people could build accessory dwelling units to the new setbacks. It wouldn't be.
Right.
Retrofitting or anything, it would be they could build them to that new, which you may be fine with. I just wanna make sure that you realize that that's what it would do.
So if we amend or we change the setback statutes, this won't help Mr. Beckham?
No, it could help Mr. Beckham, um, but uh I'm just saying that along with helping Mr. Beckham, it will change it so that, that somebody come in and, and they could put their accessory dwelling unit. Gotta pop back to that other one, um. Five feet off their property line, if you change it to meet the detached. Change it to meet the detached. Well, it would, no, it would just be a detached building. Yeah, if you change it to meet the setbacks of a detached building, that means that on the interior side yard, it could be on the interior side yard, that accessory dwelling unit could be five feet off the property line, and on the rear yard, it could be five feet off the property line.
And no one's living in an accessory building.
Right, no one's living in an accessory building, but if you, I'm just saying, if you change the accessory dwelling unit to match the accessory building, that's what your new setbacks for an accessory dwelling unit would be.
And as I remember, as we talked about this, the reason we, we made the setbacks larger for accessory dwelling units was because it would have people's living in there. And to give the neighbors space and, and not have somebody like looking right into their yard. That, that's why we did the setbacks the way we did.
Well, it was also, yes, that was, that was it, but it was also to give the accessory dwelling unit backyard space. Those five feet is not very big for a backyard, so. But I'm not trying to convince you one way or the other, I'm just pointing out that if you, if you mirror the detached building for the, for the accessory dwelling unit, that's what it would be. So if he wants to use this for a living space, then he's gotta commit for a variance?
No, comes in for a conditional use.
A conditional use. Okay, and how much is that? That's not a thousand dollars.
Yeah.
It probably should be.
Actually.
A thousand dollars isn't much, we don't get the cost.
We're, we're, we're looking at that, but that, but first of all, we'd have to determine if his building actually qualified for a existing building at the time, so.
That, that is talking to the lawyer and see if they started in two thousand eighteen.
Yeah.
Well, his intentions are, I think, above board, so it's not like he's trying to pull a fast one.
Um, no, I'm, I wouldn't, well, most people don't even come in for.
That's true.
I mean, they just do it.
Do it, don't even tell anybody.
And hope not to get caught.
And what I'm, what I'm actually proposing is that you modify it for those lots that are larger. Like mine has a half acre uh with a single-family large. And uh it's almost inherent in there that the, the spacing between neighbors and myself is much greater. Uh, and so rather than going to the five foot, maybe a ten foot's the right number. Uh, even though I could have built a building up five, uh, but I, I thought it would be nice to just leave more space for the neighbors as well.
Right. Well, that was our thinking when we put the code into place to start with, was that more space between the side and backyards made the most sense because someone would be living there.
Yeah, and I understand that.
We have to have a public hearing, we'll change the code.
Okay, give us a chance to, to think this over and, and look at, at how we wanna do that. Um, it's getting kind of late.
Ryan, could you bring that up on the zoning plan and zoning map?
His, his logs?
Yeah.
Dave, how far is it from your accessory dwelling unit to the neighbor's back door?
Probably two hundred feet. Uh, for one neighbor and then the. For one neighbor and then the other neighbor's sort of a strange lot on the corner. And then the builder moved their building all the way over, so I'm guessing that one is probably at least fifty feet to their back door. Maybe even more. I should go measure it.
No, that's fine, we're just curious.
What's your address? We don't have that.
It's four nine five east, one thousand south.
So Ryan's going to pull that up for us, are you on a Zoom or just?
It was like in the Sierra Homes subdivision, I don't even know the name of the subdivision, actually.
In Providence Heights.
Yeah, Providence Heights, that's it.
If you have an accessory building, a dwelling unit in a building and you put that in at, say, ten feet and then later on, you want to convert that to an accessory dwelling unit, you come before the administrative land body for a conditional use exception?
That's if I am not complying with the current things, I would have to do that. But what I'm hoping to do is have you change the setback rule and then I just apply for the accessory dwelling unit permit, if you want to call it that. And so it cuts out a step. And I don't have to go through the conditional use authorization. Because there's, in the requirements, there's some other things that I have to do, like with the title work and so forth. As far as filing something with Cache County and so forth.
Your response is, is not the question I asked, but I appreciate it.
I'm sorry.
No, no, I didn't want to be rude, but the question that I have was very specific and I think I got my answer. Thank you.
Sorry, I answered the wrong question then, how about that?
Okay, well, let us take this under advisement, I'm thinking you don't need a decision today.
I don't.
And then we'll just kind of keep you posted.
Okay. And if I need to come in next time I'm in town and talk to you in person, I'm happy to do that as well.
Okay.
And thank you all for staying late. So I could get off the agenda.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
What is the conditional permit? Is that what he's going to have to do is conditional permit or condition?
Initial use.
Use? What kind of costs are involved from the city on that? Is there a set fee? The application cost that he will have or the cost that the city has? Okay, so there would be an application fee, I think that currently it's a hundred dollars, so. And that's the process right now he would have to go through to get what he hopes, right?
If that outline is the building, I assume that's before it was completed. That's bigger than eight hundred square feet, like Karen.
Oh, it's twelve hundred square feet.
Well, no.
Oh, you may want to get to the mic. I'm looking, he wants, he's got twelve, he wants to use eight.
I'm looking at the footprint of the house and it looks like it's smaller than the structure that on the image there, if that's the perimeter is the foundation for a building. That's, that's bigger than the footprint of the the home. Those are bigger homes, those are half-acre lots.
We're going to take eight hundred square feet of that to make an accessory dwelling. That must have been when he was pouring the floor, it looks like. And does it have a second story?
Well, the entire accessory dwelling unit can only be twelve hundred square feet at the moment. Well, there's one story.
This was an accessory garage. So it's just a building, he didn't build it to be a. Okay. All right, these other two that we have, they shouldn't take too long, but time line, let's wait.
Which one?
Nine, six and seven.
Six and seven.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Joe Chambers, a second by Brian Marlowe. All in favor? Thank you, everyone.
See you in two weeks.